Good evening. I call to order the Planning Commission meeting this evening, Wednesday, October 5th, 2022. And Dr. Gary McCacken will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please call the roll?
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner McCacken.
Here.
Commissioner Prescott Loeffler.
Here.
And Chair McCann.
Here.
Commissioner Davis, Commissioner, excuse me, Chair Pro Tem Camp and Vice Chair Cosgrove informed staff that they would not be in attendance tonight.
Thank you. There are no special orders of business. Moving on to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion on the minutes of the previous meetings.
I move to approve. Second.
Does that approve both items A and B?
Yes.
Okay.
The second is also for A and B.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Before we vote, can I make a point of order? I was not at one of the meetings. September?
Which one?
August 31st or September 7th?
I believe it was August 31st when I was abstained.
So you're saying you'll be abstaining from the August 31st one? Okay. Thank you.
Clarification. If you, did you watch the video by any chance?
I did.
If you watched the video, you can still vote on the minutes.
Is someone going to call the roll, or do we have buttons to vote?
Past practice was just to take a vote at the same time.
Okay.
If you'd like me to call roll.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
I'm happy to.
All in favor of, let's say, all in favor of item A, the August 31st minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All in favor of the passing the, approving the September 7th minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Great. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Well, no, she said since she watched the video, she can vote. Aye. So those pass.
Chair McCann, if I may.
Please.
If you got, when you're ready to speak, could you unmute your microphones so that the audience may hear you tonight? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Just for the audience's benefit, this is our first time in the new council chamber, so we're getting used to the microphones and so forth. Oral and written communication. If there's anybody, and I'll read the little blurb, but this is regarding, if there's anybody here that wants to speak on any items that are not on the agenda, now would be the time to do them. If it's for an item that is on the agenda, when we call up that item, then that would be the time to speak. Members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, and if you desire, state your name and/or city of residence for the record and make your presentations. Please limit your presentations to three minutes. We would also say that you would need to fill out a blue speaker card. Is there, do we have any speaker cards for any items not on the agenda?
No, we do not.
And is there anybody that wants to speak on anything not on the agenda? Moving on. Consent calendar. We have no consent calendar. Item 8A, public hearings. 654 Camino de los Maris, Master Project, MP 22-089, Architectural Permit, AP 22-101, Conditional Use Permit, CUP 22-100, General Plan Amendment, GPA 22-097, Site Plan Permit, SPP 22-0, 22-103, Tentative Parcel Map, TPM 22-099, Zoning Amendment, CA 22-098, Senior Housing Medical Office Project. Do we have a staff presentation?
We do. Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Jennifer Savage, Assistant to the City Manager. Pardon me, will I pause for the presentation to come up?
Bear with us while we work out the bucks. Feel free to talk amongst yourselves.
I'm doing my best.
Don't you go blank.
Bear with us with technical difficulties. If the commission doesn't mind, I'll start with the presentation, and then we can go back to slides if need be.
I'm sorry, start with the presentation and go back to what?
Go back to slides if need be.
Sure.
Okay. So this evening, before you, you have a proposal for a senior housing and medical office project, and staff's presentation will include an overview of the application and proposal, and also discuss some of the analysis that's included in your staff report. First, in regards to the applications and findings before you this evening, it includes several applications. There was a question at the study session on August 31st in regards to why they were ordered in the way that they were, and the order that was presented at the study session was alphabetical, and so the order that you have this evening is more in line with the scope of the request. Of note, less common than, say, something like an architectural permit in San Clemente, you also have a development agreement and a density bonus request, and we'll walk through those later in the presentation. Once we get the slides up, they'll be able to orient us on the existing site, including that it's located.
Jennifer, can I interrupt just a sec?
Yeah.
Can everybody here okay? Okay.
Including that the site is located north of I-5 and south of Camino de los Maris. The project includes a request for a demolition of the existing structure and parking, surface parking, and the construction of two senior housing buildings and one medical office building. Thank you, IT. So this was just the general overview of the staff's presentation tonight. The applications, on the left is what you have before you, on the right was the order in the study session. The existing site is north of I-5 and south of El Camino Real. To the northwest is a shopping center, and to the southeast is the San Clemente Villas, an assisted living facility. A larger overview of the site shows where the intersection of I-5 is with Camino de los Maris and Estrella. Further along, Camino de los Maris, you have the project site, and further you have the signalized intersection with the project site and other properties. And then further along, de los Maris, you have the entrance to Seapoint Estates. We were just talking about what the project entails, and of note, there was reports that the project summary table on Sheet C3 was illegible, and so we did distribute that to the Planning Commission this morning, and we do have copies available this evening if members of the public wanted to see that. The project was reviewed by the DRC, or Design Review Subcommittee, three times, and the comments included, but were not limited to addressing the pedestrian environment, including landscaping, and the pedestrian passeo at the center of the development, breaking up the mass of the buildings, providing a different rhythm across the elevations, such as a variety of elevations, popouts, and the levels of roofs. Ultimately, DRC forwarded the project to the Planning Commission, but did have some other recommendations, and those are included in the minutes available online. This slide shows both residential buildings. The top one is Building 1 and would be on the right, and you can see the pedestrian passeo is showed in both of these, so it gives you a center of location. And then on the bottom is Building 2, and with each of these, you can see how the applicant added some articulation, providing varied materials and patio popouts, and a variety of roof elevations. This would articulate the elevation and provide different building components across the elevation to help it come more in line with Spanish colonial revival architecture that looks like it was built over time. Now, let's get into the density bonus request. So this evening, you have a request under the density bonus law for a concession and for waivers. There's a lot of text on the slide above you, but I wanted to highlight two important components of the concession. Although this is by definition of government code, which the sections are referenced in your staff report, it's important to note that the concession, you're looking at a reduction in site development standards that result in identifiable and actual cost reductions. So just keep that in mind as we go through the discussion of the density bonus request. And then you also have the waiver, defined in state code about waivers, so that you're not physically precluding the construction of the development, and that relates back to the concession. At the study session, there was a question of what the mechanism was for the density bonus, and that is the density bonus law. If you read through the density bonus law, it's quite technical, but the three bullet points that you see here under mechanism are really the key questions that you want to ask. Does the project qualify for a density bonus, keeping in mind that density bonus is adding extra housing units, and that the applicant does not actually have to take advantage or use that opportunity for more housing units to answer the next couple of questions. So the second one is, did the applicant make a request? Did they provide a written request for either using extra units, a density bonus, or a request for a concession, or a request for waivers? And then lastly, did the applicant provide adequate information? As you answer those questions, and as you consider the opportunity to grant a concession and/or waivers, you're also looking at the considerations for each of those, and those are outlined in your staff report. They include the answers to the questions that are above that we just went through, as well as specific findings on whether there'd be an adverse impact, or if the concession or waiver would be against state or federal law. So the density bonus request that is actually before you tonight is shown in the table, including a correction for a typo that was in the staff report. So your concession that they're requesting. The application before you this evening is, does qualify for one concession, so that's just one concession, based on the provision of 5% very low housing units. The concession that they're requesting is in regards to San Clemente's development standard for heights. Our standard includes height, both at the roof height, the plate height, and the number of stories. So that's their concession. They've also requested for waivers, waivers for elevator shaft height. The reason that's a waiver is in our code, they're allotted six feet for an elevator shaft above the maximum height, but because it would be more than six feet, they're asking for a waiver to be able to construct the project. The floor area ratio, they're requesting a waiver to go beyond the base zoning in the CC4 zone. And then they're requesting a waiver for parking, but they are requesting a waiver for parking specifically for the number of guest spaces, and I'll talk about that in more detail in the next slide. And then they're also requesting a waiver for open space. This comes from our design guidelines, the city's design guidelines, where multifamily dwellings are required to provide both private and group open space. The project shows that they comply with the group open space requirement, but they don't comply with the design guidelines for private open space. So we've talked about the mechanism, the questions that you want to ask, the considerations that you want to think about when considering whether or not to grant this request, and then we'll talk about their requests in more detail in regards to height and FAR, and this is specific to questions that came up at the study session. So at the study session in regards to height, the question, there was a question about the average, that they should show the grades, and what the high point was on the building. The project pursuant to code measures from a original grade, and also pursuant to code provides the average height of each roof element, and each roof element and their average height is shown on Sheet A-6.2, and if you have that in front of you, it also highlights where the, each roof element does or doesn't exceed the 45-foot height limit. In terms of grades, grades are shown relative to the 45-height plane on Sheet A-6.1, and so that shows where that height, that 45-height limit is, and the original grade. You could also look at the proposed grading, the cut and fill, on another sheet, Sheet C5. The question about the high point, outside of the elevator shafts, Building 1's high point is 51 feet 9 inches, and Building 2's high point is 49 feet 5 inches. In terms of FAR, the study session asked what the justification for the density bonus request is, and that is contained from letter, or contained in letters from the applicant in Attachments 21 through 24. And parking, the parking questions included, understanding what the parking assumptions were, the concept of shared parking, and also understanding the parking study. The parking study and supplemental letter are contained in Attachments 12 and 15. The parking assumptions first start with what the code requires, and for senior housing, the code requires one coverage space per unit, two parking spaces per manager's unit, in addition to, one guest space per five units, and those are to be provided on-site. And then the parking for the medical office is one per 200 square feet. The parking study that you have before you identifies the assumptions that were made from the shared parking manual, which is an industry standard calculation, and it shows the assumptions for parking demand across time of day compared to weekdays and weekends, and identifies where the greatest demand would be, and where there's an opportunity for shared parking. So now I'm going to go through the development standards for senior housing and medical office. So for senior housing, the, in terms of height, they are requesting for, I'm sorry, requesting a concession, and so that would be consistent, or could be consistent with the density bonus law. Lot coverage and lot size, they are consistent with the requirements in code. Setbacks are all consistent with the requirements in the code. Density is also less than the maximum identified in the code for senior housing. The floor area ratio here also corrects the typo in the staff report, where the underlying zone allows .5, and they're requesting .89, and that could be allowed by the density bonus. And then parking is shown here more in detail, where they're providing two parking spaces for the manager's unit, 249 covered spaces, one for each unit for the senior, and then instead of providing 50 spaces on-site, they are looking at an opportunity to share parking spaces. For the medical office, all of the standards are within code for lot area width setbacks, coverage, floor area, and height. Also before you this evening is a development agreement. This is allowed through the municipal code, which references the allowance noted in government code. There are considerations that you need to make in order to make a recommendation on a development agreement. This does require city council approval, and those considerations are outlined in your staff report. We do want to note that there are public comments that were not included in your original staff report, but were distributed this morning. Those were received first in July through September, and then another packet, September through 10:00 a.m. this morning. Staff is also aware that there were about four other comments that came through email after 10:00 a.m. Those, we believe, were either directed directly to the planning commissioners or CCED. And then before you, on this slide, I just wanted to identify a couple of suggested modifications as we move forward this evening to take into consideration. The term development agreement was not included in the resolution, so we would want to add that in the resolution if you're making a recommendation to city council. Along with that, there is a condition for the expiration of applications, and if the development is approved with the application, we do want to modify that condition, so that it's not the typical three years, but more ties in with the development agreement. Condition, let's see, condition for 11 is in regards to shared parking. It identifies that 28 parking spaces would be, for the senior housing guest spaces, would be shared on the medical office, and there was a typo there, so we'll correct that. And that is the end of staff's presentation this evening. We're available for any questions.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, just at the very end, I didn't hear, relative to proposed changes to the conditions. What did you, which condition was it that you referenced for the time, three years versus tying it in with the DA?
It was 1.6.
1.6. Okay. Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for staff?
I do.
Commissioner Loeffler. Prescott Loeffler.
Jennifer, thank you. I just want to clarify so that I fully understand the bonus density. So from what I understand is that the applicant has a lot of advantages by applying for the bonus density. What is the advantage to?
Commissioner Prescott, is your microphone on?
It is.
Nice and close.
Okay. As you're all staring at me. Is that better?
Yeah.
So according to the density bonus, what is the advantage to the applicant, and what is the advantage to the city?
The advantage for density bonuses for an applicant are enabling them to provide affordable housing, where otherwise they might not be able to within the development standards of a municipality. In terms of the benefits for the city, that is the provision of affordable housing, where we might not be able to obtain that through a development.
And if the city disagrees with the advantages that the applicant is receiving, does the city have any leeway in that area?
Thank you for that question, and I apologize, I didn't highlight that in the slide that was identifying the mechanisms that allow this request, and then the considerations for you. So this evening, in order for the commission to make a decision on the density bonus request that they're making tonight, and that's not extra units, but it's for height and those other provisions, you would consider those questions, whether they submitted the necessary information, and then those considerations that are identified in your staff report, the specific findings per government code that you have to make. the specific findings per government code that you have to make. Outside of that, it would not be appropriate to comment on. So you do have some guardrails, if you will. There is very limited considerations that you can make when you're considering the concession or waiver request.
So to be clear, to stay in my lane, I would address the three areas, which would be the height, not the setback, that is not included?
The density bonus, if they've provided the, if they've provided adequate information, then the density bonus law would not allow you...
To address the height?
To enforce the height.
To enforce the height. It does not allow me, to be clear, okay?
Correct.
Nor does it allow me to enforce the parking.
Yes, as far as their request, correct.
Okay, and then the other area, there are three, what is the other area?
The three other waivers were elevator shaft height...
Okay.
Floor area ratio, and private open space.
Private open space, okay, to be clear. So the issue of height is basically off the table, as a planning commissioner, we're not able to negotiate that.
If, if you found that the applicant has made a request that they qualify for a density bonus, and they've provided adequate information, you're correct.
If we ask for an increase in the percentages of the senior housing, does that trigger additional concessions?
It would, and it depends on how much more affordable housing they provide. So at the very low income level, the minimum to qualify for a density bonus is 5%, and every percent that you go up, you could go into qualifying for an additional concession. That exact percent that they would have to hit to get to a second concession, I would have to look up.
And one of those concessions could be to increase the height if we went to more percentage in senior housing?
Correct.
And reducing parking?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, my fellow commissioners?
I'm going to hold mine until after the applicant questions, so I can ask questions of both.
Okay. Let me see if I have some questions. So following on to Commissioner Prescott Loffler's question, if we determine that the applicant has adequately laid out why they qualify for, that there's sufficient reductions in costs and so forth, then we cannot ask relative to the changes in to development standards?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I can chime in, just, just to make this perfectly clear, because I think the answers were wonderful and spot on, but it does bear noting that the density bonus law is, while it's very technical, it's also fairly straightforward in terms of the burdens that it creates on the applicant and on the city, and as, as has been stated, if the applicant provides adequate information, which we have in attachment 21 through 24, the city's hands are tied. The, the language of the government code is a city shall grant the bonus when requested. And the, the court cases that are on point, especially recent cases, they heavily favor applicants because the state is really pushing for affordable housing. It is difficult for a city, not impossible certainly, but difficult to make findings that the information is not adequate. Those findings can be made, but it is difficult, and the courts have heavily favored applicants in recent years. So the information again is in, in these four attachments, and, and unless we can find that the information is not adequate, again, the government code says that we shall grant the density bonus. It does tie our hands.
Thank you, and feel free to weigh in and keep us on track at any time. Regarding the development agreement, in my experience, normally, development agreement, there's kind of a quid pro quo. The, the developer gets something which typically extended time to develop their project, but the city also, also frequently gets some added benefit for, for granting the development agreement. In this case, what, what's the benefit to the city to grant in the development agreement?
It, it is largely stems around the affordable housing component, in so much that the applicant could have chosen to pay the in-lief fee for 4% very low income units. And instead of getting the equivalent fund in the affordable, the affordable housing fund, we are getting actual constructed units.
Okay, but wouldn't we get those anyway with the project if it was approved, you know, within the, the three-year timeframe to, to develop it? I mean, it seems like that they're using that to, you know, because of the affordable units, they're asking for the density bonus and the reduction, the waiver and the concessions, concession and waivers, and changes, alternates to the development standards. So if that project was approved as is, it sounds like they would have three years, as currently written, to, to implement that project. And yet we're entertaining entering a development agreement that would grant them up to 20 years to do it. So is there an added benefit beyond the affordable which we seemingly would get if the project was approved anyway?
That, that is something that the planning commission could consider, whether it is adequate.
Okay, thank you. City attorney, does the city attorney generally agree with the statement, the, the letters that are attachments 21 through 24? Would you, would you say that you generally agree with them, or do you take issue with them?
I, I don't, I don't take issue with them. I don't, I don't have a vote in terms of whether the information is adequate from a legal perspective, which is what you're asking.
Yeah.
Legal perspective. These, these appear to have the information that would be required for them to prevail, for example, if they challenged a finding in the negative by the planning commissioner or the council. This is the kind of bar that's required to be cleared in order to get a density bonus. So, you know, I think what we've received from the applicant probably is adequate under the government code for them to qualify for a density bonus. That being said, it's not, it's not my call to make, but technically speaking, objectively speaking, they have provided the information that would likely clear the bar.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question.
Please.
Mr. City Attorney, I have a question. So does this applicant as a medical building, does it qualify for the bonus density?
Well, I believe, and I think this, this question might be better answered by Jennifer. I believe that the density bonus concessions and waivers are only applicable here, or only being requested for the residential property.
Just the residential, which is...
Is that, is that correct, Jennifer?
Is, is the residential property in one building?
No, the residential units would be provided on, in two different buildings.
In two different buildings, how convenient, okay, thank you.
Yes, and then I also would like to take the opportunity to let you know that they would be required to provide 10% of very low income units to qualify for a second concession.
I got a quick one for Jennifer. We've used the term medical office building throughout, but what's their obligation to keep it a medical office building? I couldn't find it in the agreement, I couldn't find it in the text, and I know a lot of people are possibly supporting this project because it does provide some medical benefit, but it, a regular office building is allowed within the zone. So if they chose to not do it medical, or it doesn't turn out that it is medical, does everything still apply?
Everything would still apply, but if the commission wanted to make that recommendation, that it be, remain medical, that would be an opportunity for you to identify in the development agreement, and that would certainly tie that, that requirement into the development.
Because I don't think it's there right at the moment.
I would have to, to verify.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple more questions for me, for me. One is staff has reviewed, this is a question maybe for Zach, and generally agrees with the, the findings of the traffic study and the parking study?
Correct. We've had our traffic consultant reviewed both the reports and concurs with the, the findings.
Okay, thank you. So relative to the write-in, write-out, and the potential for U-turns and all that, including, inclusive of that, okay. You might need to research this and get back to me later in the meeting. The question is, how many units have no kind of outdoor, private, open space, no balcony, no little courtyard, anything like that?
It's listed on the tab.
While I'm looking that up, the development agreement does have provisions that the use is medical office, and the number of units that don't have open space or private open I have not identified it here, but I believe it's 49, and we can verify that.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions at this time, I may have later. Anybody else questions at this time? Okay. Should we next allow the applicant to make their presentation? Okay. So with that, we'd invite the applicant to make their presentation. It's my understanding that they've requested up to 20 minutes of presentation time. I'm inclined to say yes to that, given the complexity of the project. Does anybody take significant issue with that? No? Okay. Please proceed, thank you.
Thank you, and, and thanks for the additional time, because I may be able to help also respond to some of the questions that, that, that were raised by the commissioners. So planning commissioners, city staff, and members of the public, good evening. I'm Tom Leary, a senior vice president with Memorial Care. And on behalf of our organization, and specifically Saddleback Medical Center, I'm privileged to present to you this evening and request the commission's recommendation for approval of our senior living and, and health center project on the Camino de los Maris property. We have several members of our design team and our engineering team here with us this evening, who will speak to the technical details of the project. But before we do that, I want to first thank the members of the planning commission, the city council, along with the city staff, and the members of the public who attended for their active participation in the joint study session conducted last August. We very much appreciated the thoughtful questions and feedback, and we've been working with city staff since then to respond to that feedback, and we're looking forward to further addressing those matters with all of you this evening. We also want to commend and express our thanks to the city staff for the comprehensive report that they produced for tonight's agenda item. We appreciate their attention to detail and their efforts to respond to the matters that were raised during the joint study session. With that, let's turn to the details of the project. As you may recall, we spent considerable time at the joint study session on the background of the project, so in the interest of time, we won't repeat that presentation here. But just to briefly set the stage for tonight's discussion, I think, I think we need to move on to the next slide. The project consists of 250 senior residential apartment homes, 13 of which are to be designated as affordable for the very low income level, and I'm going to come back to that later in my comments. And further keeping with our healthcare mission, we also plan to construct and operate a 7,500-square-foot medical office building that will offer primary specialty and urgent care services to patients in the community, and with a particular focus on the needs of the neighboring residents. We're very proud of this design, of the design of this project, and we believe that it accomplishes several important goals for the San Clemente community. First and foremost, it will create attractive housing options for approximately 325 senior residents, meaning 55 and older. It will provide them with the opportunity to stay in San Clemente, near their family members and friends, and in an environment that will promote additional socialization and engagement with their fellow residents. As Dr. Mark Schaefer, CEO of our medical foundation, noted at the joint study session, there's a well-established connection between aging well and having safe and secure housing, and maintaining a support network of family and friends nearby. So we believe that this project is squarely, squarely aligned with our organization's mission to promote the health and well-being of the communities that we serve. Just for additional context, we expect, based on our own market research, that the average age of persons moving into this project will be around 70 or 71, and most residents will be over the age of 65 and fully retired. Second, with 250 housing units, including units classified as affordable, the city will be able to make significant progress towards its obligations under the state-mandated regional housing needs allocation or RENA laws, and importantly, without having to spend one dime of city taxpayer money. When city leaders first approached us almost a year and a half ago and asked if we would be willing to allow this property to be included as part of the city's broader housing plan, we thought that was a great idea. We began to think about what type of housing would both mesh with our healthcare mission and best serve and fit within the community. We quickly landed on the idea of a combined residential and medical office development aimed at seniors. Since that time, our team has worked closely with the city staff to design an attractive and functional development that would allow seniors to enjoy the benefits of all that the neighboring San Clemente community has to offer. Our goal was never to come up with the largest project that we could build, or the cheapest. Rather, we strive to create an attractive community with stylish architecture that blends with the neighboring buildings, minimizes impacts on adjacent neighborhoods, and maintains that Spanish village-by-the-sea feel. We've also engaged with community residents and business and civic leaders on the project, including through open houses, homeowners' association meetings, and other direct communications. We listened to and responded to their feedback and have been fully transparent on this project. I'm pleased to announce tonight that as a result of those very efforts, we've been working with the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. We've had an open and professional dialogue with them for several weeks on the affordable component. We very much support their agenda. We agree with their agenda. For us, it was never a question about affordability. It was a question of viability, the economic viability of the project for a potential joint venture partner. In short, how many units can we handle, and within the 250, and still make this work? We've exchanged information with the coalition, we've exchanged ideas and perspectives, and shortly before today's meeting, we've reached an understanding, and Memorial Care will accept as a condition of approval that the affordable housing, very low component, can be 8%. And we're very confident that we can make that work. And so I want to thank the members of the coalition for their willingness to listen and to engage constructively to make this work. I also want to thank council member Duncan, who made, was very clear from the very beginning of our discussions on the importance of affordable housing. We heard him, we listened to him, and he was extremely helpful in, in getting all of us to better understand the circumstances within which we were working. So we believe that as a result of these efforts, that the result of these efforts is a project that's appropriate in style, scope, and size. It strikes the right balance between many and at times competing considerations, and most importantly, it's one that will serve the community, and particularly its seniors, for years to come. So with this introduction, I'm now going to turn it over to Tim Mustard, a principal with TCA Architects, who will walk you through the details of the project. Tim will then turn it over to Dean Arizabal, a principal with LSA Associates, who will address our traffic and parking analysis, and then I'll offer a few closing remarks, after which we'll welcome your questions and comments. In that regard, we understand that there are likely to be questions remaining from the study session on the density bonus law and SEQA, and how they impact this project. Of course, the city staff and the city attorney are your principal resources on these issues, but I want to let you know that Greg Sanders, a partner with the Nassimin Law Firm, and our land use attorney, is also here to address any questions that the planning commissioners may have. As an aside, Greg handled the entitlements with the city for the Talega development, and he happens to be a sitting council member in his home community of Indian Wells. He also happens to be a former planning commissioner, so he can speak from multiple perspectives on these issues. So with that, I'm... So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tim from TCA, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you to the planning commission, the staff, and everybody who's here to allow us to present this great project. It was not too long ago, we were here with Jamberry Housing to build an affordable housing project in the community of Talega. And so we're excited to be back in front of you again today in this great city. Appreciate it. My name's Tim Mustard, and I'm a principal and an equity partner in a medium-sized architectural firm based here in Orange County. Behind me, we have 125 staff and 38 licensed architects to help put this great project before you today. Let me go ahead and go to the next slide, please. I want to start off with some site context. This opening slide is showing an overall site context relative to the adjacent buildings and their respective overall building heights. This demonstrates the proposed project fits within the neighborhood size, the scale, the architectural style and function within this horizontal mixed-use community. This project fits within, which fits within the fabric of a walkable and pedestrian-friendly community where seniors and grandparents and parents and guests, they can walk in a truly walkable neighborhood, close to stores, to cafes, to the medical healthcare office nearby, and will become one of the most vibrant communities for seniors in Orange County. Next slide, please. This view looking north on Camina de los Maris, I want to point out that what we have done is by using state-of-the-art three-dimensional modeling and technology developed by Google, our team has built this full-scale model and inserted it into the Google Street View. This technology is better than story poles or a small architectural scaled model where it's hard or difficult to gauge the scale and how it fits within the surrounding community. This technology allows us to insert the project to be seen within its site context. And as you can see here, the overall building mass is not only consistent with the surrounding buildings, but is actually lower than the office tower across the street. Next slide, please. So here's a couple of design vignettes we wanted to start out with. Because we are providing a seniors project and it's in the affordable component, the state density bonus law allows us to build up the 350 total units by right. This upper vignette on the slide shows approximate size and scale of what 358 units would look like with its required parking, roughly six to seven stories and up to 2.0 FAR. No doubt, this design would maximize the profits of the building owner, but we're not going to do that. It doesn't fit within the context of the site. Instead, as you can see by the lower vignette, what we're proposing is a carefully crafted project that is smaller, more sensitive to the community in terms of scale and architecture that is befitting of the city's village-by-the-sea design. Next slide. This slide demonstrates the straight-on elevation of our project, and it's not only consistent with the surrounding buildings, but it's actually lower than the project located at 675 and again at 629 Camina de los Maris. Next slide. Now a little bit about the architecture. This slide is showing the three-story building edge along Camina de los Maris. It's important to note here that the building mass is broken down by providing view corridors throughout the project. The view corridors create porosity, they break down the overall massing, and it creates a pedestrian-scaled walkable paseo. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide, please. This north building perspective shows another area, another angle of the entry area where we are stepping the building down from four stories to three stories. And it's important to point out here that our team is paying attention to the details throughout the entire project. The building doesn't have a front and a back in terms of architecture. We are applying the same quality, style, and design on all four sides of the buildings, and all the paseo courts, and all the intimate settings. And so we're not chipping any of the details out throughout the building. Next slide. This shows the three-story edge. I just want to point out here that the landscape, the generous landscape area is on average of about 15 feet, well above the 10-foot minimum. The setbacks have pedestrian-scaled features consisting of low privacy walls, ornamental landscaping, intimate seating areas, and an ornamental fountain in keeping with the Spanish-style theme. Next slide. And this view from the southern entry will show the architecture for the two-story medical office building. Next slide. This exhibit shows the roof heights. And what I want to point out here is that the dark blue area that is shaded represents over 50% of the overall buildings that is consistent with a building height of 18 to 44 feet, below the 45-foot maximum. And less than 50% of the roof shaded in the yellow-blue area are above the 45 feet. This includes the smaller elements consisting of elevator towers, which are designed for vertical circulation. They also have to accommodate equipment, horseways, ventilation, and roof structures that are required by code. This slide is a good example of how we've broken down the buildings into more intimate village by creating those paseos, so instead of one large building, you're seeing three separate buildings with the intimate paseos through the buildings to enhance the views to the ocean. Next slide. This slide, our exhibit, shows the number of stories for each building. And starting with the building one to the left, which consists of a three and a four stories, the four stories are highlighted by the yellow outline and is set back over 140 feet from the street edge. Building two, the roofs are all three stories along Camina de los Maris. And the partial fourth floor is actually stepping down as we take advantage of the slope adjacent to the five freeway. Next slide. So there's been a lot of requests about story poles. So we wanted to put this slide up to demonstrate the small colored vignette in the lower right-hand corner is an example of what story poles look like. And using the 3D technology, we applied that concept to our site. And what, you know, due to the size and complexity of the different roof forms that we're proposing, story poles just aren't practical. It's particularly when you take in consideration that when you're looking from sea point estates, where the minimum house is 600 feet away, and some houses are as far as 1,000 and 2,000 feet away from the site, it's very difficult to really see the benefit of the story poles, which is why we are proposing the three-dimensional modeling, which we'll show next. So if you can go to the next slide, please. In the next few slides, we're going to show you actually the three-dimensional modeling in view simulation. So these are actual views taken from the residents' backyards up above in the neighboring housing development. And we believe this technology is setting a new standard on how to view a project before it's actually built. You can actually see the project in the background as if it's actually finished. Now, the technology's not perfect, but let's focus on the views, which is the point of this slide. In the next few slides, out of the 220 lots that are in the sea point estates, there are four lots that have some impact to their blue water views. And we're going to show that in a minute. But over 260 lots are not affected at all. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So we saw the view from three Campania. This is the view from the backyard from five Campania. As you can see, the view from the backyard of five Campania has a slight intrusion on some of the blue water views beyond the taller medical office building in the foreground. Next slide, please. And at seven Campania, the view from the backyard has a slight intrusion in some of the blue water views. Next slide. And at nine Campania, there's a slight intrusion on the blue water views. On the next slide, at 11 Campania, you'll see that there's no impact. Now, we're starting to go up the hillside, and so from here on, you're not going to see any impact from our project from the neighboring sites. In fact, on the next slide, if you may, this is at 30 Campania and beyond. You can see there's no obstruction, and you can see our 3D model in about the middle of that image there on the left-hand side. And then lastly, if you can go to the next slide, at 17 Marbella, which is an empty lot up in the sights, you can see our project again on the left-middle-hand side of the slide. There's no impact on the views. So that presents the slide videos. What I'd like to do is go through an actual video presentation. So the next slide, if we can click on the link, we'll go through a quick view simulation. This is where we use the Google Enhanced Street Views and actually take a perspective from someone's backyard and actually pan to the left and pan to the right. We're going to do that on every property, so it's going to go rather quickly. But what I want to point out is what doesn't show up in the static views is this idea that you're always going to be looking at the project in one perspective, right? If you're up there on the lot, you're going to be able to pan to the left and pan to the right. This view starts out similar to one of the earlier slides showing the context of the project relative to the surrounding context. So we've started off at one Campania. This is three Campania. Panning left to right. Going up the hill a little bit. This is five Campania, where we showed a little earlier. Most of the views are still blocked by that medical office building. You can see our project there in the background on seven Campania. And then up on nine. And as we get up to 11, we're starting to get higher up in elevation. So again, it's a little jerky, but you can see as you go from left to right, there's minimal impacts as we go further up the street. Now, it's not a perfect technology. Like I said, this is Google Street View. The trees are a little fuzzy because they actually show up as individual planes. But the model that we build, just to give you some context there, the model that you see in the background, we actually use a program called SketchUp, which is also a program developed by Google. It's a three-dimensional modeling program. We're actually building the model in full scale. So if I'm building a six-foot-tall window, we're building it in the model as six foot. So what you're seeing is an actual representation of a full building that is then inserted using the geotechnology available from Google Earth. As we continue to go up the hill, you can see that there's very little impact. There's our project in the background there. I also want to point out, it's difficult to see at this vantage point. But another thing that we have taken into consideration also in terms of the views is there are back-of-house things that are required to make these buildings function, air conditioning units, for example. And those units are carefully hidden behind the roof parapets on the roof of the buildings. So they're not on the ground plane to interrupt with the pedestrian experience on the ground floor. But as much as possible, given the character of the red tile roofs and the 70 different roof forms that we have, we've done our best to hide that equipment from sight. So we have just one last presenter with a few comments about traffic. Can I bring Dean up, or do you want to? No, I'm running out of time.
Yeah, you're out of allotted time. City attorney, do you have thoughts?
That's the commission's prerogative. If you want to give them more time.
I would say, please be very brief, maybe two additions.
If I may, if you prefer, we can, you know, have our traffic and parking person just available for Q and A. Want to be respectful of your time and want to be responsive to the...
Okay. We would like to hear from them, but briefly in a highlight-only format. We've got a lot of speaker cards and a lot of people here that want to speak tonight.
Okay, Dean?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I know that we're pressed for time, so I'll make it brief. As you know, the project will provide 312 total parking spaces on site for the 250 senior residential units and 7,500-square-foot medical office building. This includes 251 spaces for the senior units, 23 spaces for the guests of the units, and 38 spaces for the medical office building. Next slide, please. The proposed project will include 61 shared parking spaces for the senior residents and the medical office building. This shared parking agreement is appropriate for the project. Shared parking arrangements are so common and almost universal for mixed-use developments. The viability and success of shared parking is dependent on complementary uses, uses that have peak parking during different time periods. Our research and studies show that peak parking demand for each project use does not occur at the same time. For example, parking for the medical office building is high during the day, but quickly decreases after 6:00 PM. Conversely, guest parking for the senior residential units peaked from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. Next slide, please. With the medical office parking diminishing at 6:00 PM and the senior residential parking increasing after 7:00 PM, shared parking between the two uses is completely justified. Next slide, please. Survey data and parking rates from the most respected traffic and parking associations and organizations in the country support our parking conclusions. I look forward to discussing those with you. Next slide, please. Should be noted that LSA also completed the traffic impact analysis for the project. Some key findings are highlighted here. I also welcome the opportunity to discuss any traffic-related questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. We ask for your recommendation this evening, and we welcome your questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. As long as the consultants are kind of talking right now, do we want to, do we have any questions for the consultants before we get into public comments?
I have one on parking, just briefly. Dean, is that, is the dean? When you said the, it was the study done by residential parking, what about senior residential parking?
Yes, it's senior residential parking.
It is senior.
Yes, correct.
And the peak time was at seven, and they make few trips. What about the trips that they get from their physical therapist? You know, their caregiver, were those taken into consideration when you?
Yes. Are we talking trips or parking? They're all considered, both?
All the trips that come to a senior.
That is absolutely correct.
They don't tend to leave that often, but they do have a lot of visitors coming in.
Correct. Everything's accounted for.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a number of things I'd like to ask, not just of you, but of the project team and staff before public comments, so they have this information available to them when they make their comments. We're processing this project simultaneously altogether, so one resolution covers all issues. So if one of the items doesn't get a positive finding, the whole thing would be voted against. Is that correct, Jennifer?
If there is an application where you cannot make the positive finding, then that particular application would not go forward.
Just that one?
Right. Now, there might be some overlap because one component of the project requires multiple applications. So we would have to consider that when it comes to that.
Okay. And it's my understanding that the general plan change, the zoning change, and even the parcel map doesn't even require the specific project to be processed and approved. Is that correct?
If you mean that those could be processed separately, that's correct.
Okay. So those don't require, the density bonus doesn't affect them directly, and they're pretty clean to review the way I understand it. Now, if the project doesn't happen after it's approved, the only thing that goes away is the CUP, the site plan, and architectural permits. The zoning, the tract map, and the general plan amendments stay in place because they run with the land. The others run with the project.
The tract map, the parcel map, does have an expiration date to it. So if you were to support the project with, say, the development agreement request for 20 years, if after 20 years, they didn't record a final map, that would go away.
20 years, okay. And then I already asked... And then I already asked a question. Does the CUP obligate that the commercial building is medical? And I don't think it does at this point, but we are allowed to add that as condition of approval?
You could identify that in the development agreement.
Development agreement, okay.
However, the conditional use permit is for the senior housing component, not for the medical office.
And the one thing I'd like the applicant to think about and public on the new agreement to do 8%, if there would be any consideration on upping that if they weren't all low? If it went low, moderate, and whatnot, would that up the percentage? And could that be balanced out where it's the same cost, but it would up the percentage? And that might provide more available housing to a wider spread of local seniors.
Commissioner, the issue for us there, I think, would... Because there's a direct relationship to the number of units. And as our consultants indicated, you know, we could go up to 358. We purposely stayed down at 250 because we thought that that was more consistent with the feel of the neighborhood and the surrounding community. Where if you increase the number of units that are designated affordable and... But keep that 250 the same, then it starts to put pressure on the economics. And not from the standpoint of profitability. It's a question of viability for a joint venture partner, a developer that's going to come in, and can they recover their investment on that? And so that's the analysis we'd have to go through. We're comfortable with the numbers that we've put in. We've done some basic analysis of it, and we can... We're confident that there's a market for this at the level that we've agreed to. To go beyond that, the concern would be what it would do to the number of units to make it pencil out. And we've tried to stay at the 250 for the reasons that I've laid out.
Well, I wasn't thinking of changing the 250.
Yeah. It puts added pressure on that number of units in terms of the economic viability. And of course, at the end of the day, people want the project built. You know, you want that 8%. You want the seniors to have the benefit of the project.
And is the... Is there a spread in the low-income units, or are they all the studios?
No. We... My understanding on it is that, and it's one of the other appeals of this design in keeping the number where it is, is that we will be able to spread the affordable units out throughout the project, as opposed to having a designated...
For each floor plan type?
Yeah, as opposed to having them designated in a separate building. And from a social standpoint, that's a much more attractive option in terms of integrating the affordable tenant... The affordable housing tenants with the broader project. So I don't believe that we've nailed down the actual mix, because I think one of the elements, and the planning staff can correct me on this if I'm mistaken, but one of the conditions of approval is developing that affordable housing plan that would lay out all those details.
And can we specify that include multiple floor plan types rather than just studios?
We could, and as it's identified in the development agreement, they would be required to provide a variety of affordable units between all floor plans.
Yeah. And I failed to answer or address your question from before the comments about the development agreement in terms of what else is in there. There are a number of other provisions in there that benefit the city or that address matters of interest to the city. Some of them are more legal in nature, but it really does fix the nature of the development. I think, to your question about the medical office building, because I was thinking about it back there, I do think it is in the development agreement. And so to the extent that we were going to change from that, we would have to come back and get some kind of an amendment, some kind of an approval to do that. Plus, in terms of, you know, building a medical office building is different than building a regular office building, so you'd have all of that to deal with as well. So, you know, I think those questions are probably better addressed by the city staff and the city attorney, but there are a number of other benefits. One other benefit, incidentally, is that the development agreement has a provision in it that would basically close out and waive all of the remaining issues under the 2019 settlement agreement, so that that book is closed and we're done.
Okay.
Okay.
And then Jennifer, in all my reading, and I've read... I can't keep it all straight. I could have sworn I ran across something in the density bonus law that indicated they would have to remain low-cost for 50 years rather than the 40. And I think that needs to be checked and confirmed.
Yes, the current draft of the development agreement is 45 years. The density bonus law, if you're looking at the state law and not our outdated density bonus ordinance in code, 55 years is not explicitly stated, but it certainly is implied in some of the provisions for rental units. So there is a lower, lesser term for sale units, but for rental units, 55 years is certainly more typically seen.
So does that mean that the development agreement needs to be changed to that number? Or is the 40 years in the development agreement stay?
It is under the purview of the Planning Commission to recommend modification to the draft that you have before you this evening, 255 years.
Okay. That's it.
I have one more question.
Please.
Mr. Larry, please stay. I'm actually going to speak to Jennifer. You mentioned the trigger for additional concessions would be 10%. So going up the additional to 8% does not trigger anything as far as additional conditions?
No additional concessions...
Concessions, I'm sorry.
Would they qualify for.
And Mr. Larry, when you take it to 8%, are there going to be any physical changes to the project other than dedicating the extra units?
Certainly not that I'm aware of. The determination was made to go to 8% literally probably about an hour and 90 minutes before this meeting, so I'm giving you real-time information. But I think the working assumption is that the plans stand as is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple follow-on questions. Commissioner Crandall, were you asking... Because they bumped it to 8%. Were you... And my understanding is that 5% was going to be very low. Were you asking if now all of the 8% was also going to be very low, or some of it would be low-income? Or... Because there's tranches of affordability. Was that kind of embedded in your question? Or if not, I have that question to give more flexibility on who the income ranges.
I guess I was really looking at it to crunch the numbers. Instead of doing 3% more low, could you do 4% medium at the same cost? Because I'd really like to see... There's some seniors that are going to want to get into this project that cannot afford the market cost, but don't qualify for the low cost, but they might for one of those tiers, and that would open up more units for local seniors.
I understand the question, and as I stand here today, I'm not in a position to answer because I'm frankly not that good at math. But I think that the, you know, the point that you're making is... Or what you're asking is, is there a way to kind of crunch numbers and see if you get to the same place and actually open up more units, you know, for people that are on that scale? We haven't discussed this with the coalition either, so I don't want to speak for them.
And maybe they can talk about that.
Our focus has been on the very low, and so as we stand here today, what we would be saying is we would change the development agreement to specify 8% very low, which would translate to 20 units. I can do that math, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. As a follow-on to that, I agree, because if, like, if I'm mistaken, they're supposed right now proposing all very low, not just low, but very low. And so I personally would prefer to see some strata, because Commissioner Crandall's absolutely right. There's going to be people that, you know, aren't available to afford the market rent, but they're not going to qualify for the very low, but maybe they qualify for low or medium or some other category, and we'd love to have them too as options. So I know that, you know, what we're considering tonight is not a final approval, in that it's going to go to the city council. So I would suggest that you consider and explore those, you know, issues before you go to city council.
And we certainly would commit to further engagement with staff and with the coalition and others that are interested in that issue to see if there's a mix that actually makes more sense.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have, and then we'll get to public comments in just a second. For the parking, relative to parking, I'm not sure. It might be a you issue, or maybe the consultant. But I'm significantly concerned about, you know, the parking is... Yes, it's per code, but it's pretty minimal. But if the parking, like, if there's 250 units and they're all reserved for individual spaces, and yet there's residents that don't have a car, but they have a reserved space, and maybe they want to keep that reserved space for the once a week on a Sunday afternoon when their child comes to visit them, right? That that space is... Yes, it's a space, but it's not really available. It's not utilized and being utilized. So can you please address, has there been any consideration of how actually you're going to distribute and make available parking? Is it going to be unrestricted? Are there going to be reserved spaces? And I will tell you and warn you that this is of significant concern to myself and I'm sure others.
Dean was just telling me that, you know, their focus, of course, was on the supply. Chairman McCann, I think the detail of your question is that we just haven't gotten to that level of detail yet in terms of developing the HOA rules and how parking's going to get assigned and whether there'll be an added cost associated with it. I'd say the analysis that's been done at this point is more of a macro analysis, and we're comfortable with it. And I think that the city's consultants also are comfortable with it, but we certainly take your comment to heart. I understand where you're coming from, and I think the scenario that you laid out is certainly a realistic one. You know, as somebody that has aging parents and kind of dealt with these issues, I think you're right on that. So we can certainly drill down into that a little bit deeper and see if there's something that we can commit to that would get you comfortable on that issue.
Thank you. I have no further questions at this time.
Does the development agreement run with the property?
Yes.
So when we split the two parcels, the DDA runs with the property?
Correct.
If they were to sell to someone else, does the DDA attach to the new owner?
It does, and the city... The way that the development agreement is written, they do have to inform the city, and we do have to okay it.
If they choose to be the ground lease owner and still develop the project with someone else, does the new project person that would own the building, but the hospital would hold the ground lease, have to follow the DDA?
Yes, the DA runs with the land, and any development on that would be... Have to be consistent.
Subject to that?
Yes.
And if I might add, there's a specific provision in the development agreement about assignment and that addresses these kinds of issues. This topic has been one that we've specifically discussed with the city staff and understand all the reasons behind the questions that you're asking. And it's set up, I think, to address what your concern is, which is that basically anybody that comes in has to play by those rules.
On the issue of parking, because that's one of the things that I think is problematic, especially with the office building during the hours of like 7:00 in the morning till 5:00 p.m., that you still have competition between, you know, patients coming to the doctor's offices, whichever doctors you might have there, you said primary care, and competition with those that live in the, you know, housing. When you talked about HOA rules, did you... Does that mean there might be a rule saying nobody can park over in that, you know, shared area from, you know, during the morning hours? Because if you go across the street at the medical office building, the tall one, where they have a blood draw station, you can go there at 7:00 in the morning, and there's no parking spaces already, and they're not competing with, you know, a housing development right next door.
Yeah.
So my biggest concern really is parking, not so much the residents, but the people that are going to utilize the medical office building.
Right. You know, aside from whatever parking rules are imposed as a... On the residence of the senior facility, there will be a shared parking agreement between the owner of the office building and then whoever is involved in the residential center that I think will address those issues. Again, I understand where you're coming from on it, and those are real practical issues. Those aren't imaginary. And so I think that we would have to drill down on those to make sure that we're comfortable, that we're not going to end up with something that's just mythical.
Any other questions from the commission? Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now going to open the public hearing and hear from the public. Please note that if you want to talk, I have a stack of speaker cards. If you haven't filled one out, please come up to the front, get one, and fill one, and pass them to these great folks up here, and they'll make sure I get it. We're excited to hear from you for three minutes each. So there is a three-minute time limit per person, and in the interest of everybody's time, that will be strictly enforced. Thank you. So if the yellow light comes up, your time is running short, and if when it grows red, you're going to get the yank or whatever it is. So with that being said, and I apologize in advance to everybody whose names I'm going So our first speaker will be Linda Jürgen. Coming up following Linda will be Kay Loper Letty, and after them, Pedrag Mitrevsky.
Good evening. Good evening to the members of the commission and to all others who are in attendance here tonight. My name is Linda Jürgen. I've been a resident of San Clemente for 25 years. My concern tonight is for the 1,455 elderly rental... Renter households in San Clemente, whose welfare is at stake in your negotiations with memorial care over the allotment of low-income housing units to be made available at the planned site of the senior apartments on Los Marias where the old hospital used to be. Now, I have news. I've heard the news that the number, the percentage, has been raised today. I was not aware of it until I came in here. I don't have a pen to amend my remarks. So I'm delighted that the number has risen to 8%. However, with the immense need we have here in the city of San Clemente for low-income senior housing, I would like to ask if you could push it further. Your own expert economic consultants have reported that developers can still make a profit, remaining in the black economically, if 15% are dedicated to low-income units and memorial care. I would hope that they would consider that and that you would perhaps press for that. So anyway, I think it's great, and I'm delighted to hear about the plans for the program. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Next speaker is Kay Loper Letty, followed by Pedrag Mitrevsky, and after that, Grace Is Kay Loper Letty here?
I'm hearing she left.
Okay. I'm hearing she left. Pedrag Mitrevsky, followed by Grace Todd, and then Connor Medina.
Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me? Thank you, council members and planning committee members. My name is Dr. Pred Mitrevsky. I live here in San Clemente, have been here for 17 years with my wife and three kids who go to San Clemente High School, California native, grew up in Huntington initially. I've been practicing as an internal medicine physician on community of Los Marias now for 17 years since I finished my residency, and I see a lot of senior patients in the community. And I think housing is really important for seniors. I think that the location on Los Marias is an excellent place for seniors to live. They have real good physicians nearby, as well as primary care and specialists. There's pharmacies, there's all kinds of eating places, imaging labs. So I think it's a good project that'll help our senior community in the area. My main thing. My main thing.
Thank you so much, Doctor. Short and sweet. Grace Todd, then following by Connor Medina and Jake Anderson.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Grace Todd. I'm a 20-year resident of San Clemente, and I'm here to express my support for this project. I'm also a seven-year employee of Memorial Care Saddleback Medical Center, and I just want to comment about how proud I am of Memorial Care and how it has been, how it cares for the community members. I really think that that's part of our culture at Memorial Care and that this project aligns with these values. We're a nonprofit healthcare system, and that means we, our profits are reinvested back into the hospital for the patients and to the community for the benefit of everyone. We have a long history of giving back to the community with free community education programs, health screenings, support groups, and clinics, while also investing in the education and training of health professionals. Last year, our system provided over $200 million in community benefit to the community. It's like we provide grants to organizations like AgeWell Senior Services to assist with senior transportation and Meals on Wheels, to Friendship Shelter to assist in temporary housing, a grant for Helping Hand Worldwide, which provides mobile fresh food for low-income seniors. Just this past weekend, we had a healthcare expo in Laguna Woods where seniors could learn about, could speak to physicians and learn about advancements in healthcare and ways to stay healthy. I specifically work for the Philanthropic Foundation, which raises money for the hospital, and what we consistently hear is that Saddleback and Memorial Care cares about its people and that we treat patients like family, and these patients are so grateful for their care that they become our donors. And so I think this proposal is just another demonstration of how Memorial Care contributes and cares for the community and for seniors. And I just want to end by telling you about my neighbor across the street whose parents, her in-laws, they're on a fixed income, and their rent was recently raised $300 a month, and she started looking for other options for them. And every community she came across was full, and some of them had a waitlist of six years, and so she was not even allowed to put their name on a waitlist. And so to help them out, their family, extended family, is helping them to pay for their rent, and they would have liked to have them close by, so it would be wonderful to have another option for them so they could help them as they get older if they would be close by. So I request your support for this project, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Connor Medina, followed by Jake Anderson and David Abernathy.
Good evening, Chairman McCann and Planning Commissioners. My name is Connor Medina. I'm the Government Affairs Manager for the Orange County Business Council, the leading voice of business in Orange County, representing businesses in our mission to enhance the region's economic development and quality of life. OCBC is proud to express its support for the Memorial Care Senior Housing and Health Center project. One of the Business Council's main priorities for decades has been to facilitate the development of new housing in a region that faces an existential housing shortage across the board, including housing for seniors. Our research on the local housing landscape consistently shows a shortfall of units necessary to meet the demand of our workforce and our overall population. Today, there are 600,000 seniors over the age of 60 in Orange County, and this number is expected to double in the next 20 years, while the housing stock is currently incapable of keeping up with this population increase. In fact, our Community Indicators Report released earlier this week found that the 65 and up segment of the population is the only segment expected to grow from now, between now and 2060, from 17% to 29%. So this is an investment in San Clemente's future as well. The business community is acutely aware that the housing, that housing is a determinant of one's overall health. Due to this, we are seeing a variety of industries driving, supporting, and partnering on housing initiatives, including healthcare providers. This transformational senior housing project brings both Memorial Care's renowned healthcare services and 250 units of sorely needed senior housing together in one location. The urgent care and health facility on this campus will be accessible to all San Clemente residents as well. The Business Council would also like to emphasize the applicant's commitment to making sure that this development fits the community by ensuring the design of the buildings complement the character of its surroundings and other building heights while demonstrating that the project has minimal impact on traffic patterns. This project will help local seniors remain in the community that they call home and will help address the overall housing shortage affecting San Clemente families. The Orange County Business Council respectfully asks for your approval for this senior living and medical facility project based on the significant benefits that it will provide to San Clemente families and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Anderson, followed by David Abernathy and John Conk.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission staff. Thank you for allowing us to speak and to address you. I want to come to you on two fronts here. One, as a former resident of San Clemente, I grew up here. My wife and I lived here for the first couple of years of my first daughter when she was born, and we unfortunately had to move because of costs, as that does happen. Fortunately, we've stayed in Orange County, and we don't ever plan to leave this area. Another story about a family having to leave was my great-grandparents, who lived in San Clemente for almost all of their lives. Unfortunately, they did leave when they were older because they were unable to continue to take care of themselves in the home that they were in. They needed more attention medically. So due to the lack of that kind of attention at that time, they were forced to sell their house and they moved up to Arcadia. You know, I grew up down here. I served at San Clemente beaches. I did junior lifeguards down here. I learned to swim at Only Hands a Beach Club, like probably a lot of people in here did as well. And a lot of those things were made available to me because my grandmother was still here, and she was able to drive me and take me. Fortunately and unfortunately for her, she did pass before having to deal with needing extended care. So what would have been great is to have these extra apartments, whether they be low-income, but just senior-focused, so that our senior community has options to be able to stay in the city and the town they love. Everybody knows that when they come to visit here, they're happier. I've got people in from DC right now that as soon as they stepped off the plane, there's a big smile on their face. Nobody wants to leave, and nobody wants to be forced to leave because they don't have, they aren't able to get the care that they need. And I feel that as we are able to build these projects that will be focused on our seniors, we should take advantage of that and take care of the people that took care of us for probably our whole lives. Switching a little bit of the role, I do, my profession is in commercial retail development, and I will tell you that Memorial Care is, and they're incredibly invested in the communities that they serve. They're my family's doctors is all Memorial Care. We utilize them for everything from our childbirth up to our normal daily go-doctor visits. This is a thoughtful developer that has taken into consideration San Clemente's unique perspective on how everything looks and how everything's supposed to be. You saw from their, their plan how they've taken into consideration just the views of the ocean, of the few people behind them, and maintain those views, and we all know how important those are. They are going to be here a long time. There's a lot of Memorial Care around. You don't have to worry about a short-lived area. And a developer that listens to the city, the community, makes agreements to up these kind of numbers right before a meeting is one that you should really consider, so I urge you guys to recommend this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, David Abernathy, followed by John Conk, and then Richard Monks.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is David Abernathy, and I live at 23 Cantalina Seapoint Estates in San Clemente. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my thoughts concerning the Memorial Care housing project. I attended the August 31st joint meeting with the council and the planning commission. I was pleased with the concern and depth of understanding of the council and the planning commission. All members were trying to understand the project better and to do the best for our community. The majority of the council and the planning commission in their discussions were concerned about traffic conditions and the lack of information of that impact. The need for story polls was discussed and how they could help with the adjacent residents to evaluate their view compromise. The most important discussion point was the request of Memorial Care for a zoning variance to allow four-story structures. This was combined with the discussion of asking for a reduction in the number of rental units from 250 to around 125. Based on the information above, I support the city council discussion and the planning commission discussion requiring a traffic study, a story poll installation, granting no variance request, and reducing the rental units to 125. Thank you.
Thank you. John Conk, followed by Richard Monks, and then Linda Rogers.
My name is John Conk, and I'm a San Clemente homeowner. Let me start by saying that I'm not opposed to the appropriate and responsible redevelopment of the hospital side of senior housing and medical office uses. If the project was reduced to conform with the city's established height limit of 45 feet, the maximum allowable number of stories, three, and within the allowable FAR, and meet with the city's minimum parking requirements without shared parking. There are just too many potatoes in this senior apartment sack. Concessions, waiver after waiver after waiver. I count two concessions, by the way, not one. Height is one, number of stories is a second, and they're not the same thing. If you need all of these, then maybe you're trying to do too much. Again, there's too many potatoes. Having said that, tonight, I want to talk to you about the rush review and approval process that this project is enjoying. I've never seen a significant project move so swiftly through the review and entitlement process as this, and that's not a good thing. Some important steps are being skipped. I made mention of this at the August 31st Planning Commission and City Council joint study session, and my comments were swept under the rug by the city attorney. I also spoke at the city council, Medina, last night during public comment. I'm here to tell you again that this is not the proper way to entitle a development project. If a development came to you today, the planning commission, and they wanted to develop 250 units, do you think that they would be able to receive entitlement approval without a formal public review and comment period as required by sequel law for the environmental impacts of that 250-unit development? Would you make that recommendation to approve that project without any formal public comment period? I'm sure you wouldn't. Of course, the answer is no, but that is what staff is asking you to recommend to the city council tonight. In 2021, the programmatic EIR for the housing element update did not include this project during the public review and comment period, and now 1,000 pages, 1,037 pages of environmental studies have just dropped a few days ago. They're also not made available for public review and comment. That's four inches, two reams of documents that the public review period, there isn't one for that. Have you reviewed this thousand-page, or this thousand-page document? I haven't. I've only had time to look at a few of them. A 250-unit development without having formal review and comment from the public to review potential significant environmental impacts is not appropriate. Please don't fall for your city staff stating that it is not required because the programmatic EIR has already been certified. Let me read to you from one of the newly released documents, the VMT analysis, which is part of the 1,037 pages. Page one states, and I quote, "The objectives of the San Clemente Housing Element Update included, number one, identify potential future rezoned sites and obtain public feedback," end quote. The certified programmatic EIR for the housing element update clearly states that this project was not included in the public review and comment process. Public feedback related to this project has not been obtained, not during the previous programmatic EIR process and not now during this addendum process. The VMT analysis also states on page two, "The project site was analyzed in the programmatic EIR with 238 units, not 250." I would argue that it wasn't studied appropriately at all because the analysis was not distributed for public review.
Thank you, Mr. Conk.
With the project included. Don't recommend this project as is to the city council.
Richard Monks, followed by Linda Rogers, and then Ken Rogers.
Members of the Planning Commission and staff, my name is Richard Monks, and I reside in Seapoint. My first concern is on Memorial's plan sheet A-6.1 site review. It shows two view lines, one directly over the CVS and the other one is over San Clemente Villas. The two view lines have nothing to do with the proposed senior housing. I also noticed that the proposed building height on the same page is underestimated by as much as 20 feet. If the correct building height and the proper sightlines are used, it will show how impacted the views really are. I pointed this out to Memorial, so they did a view simulation, or what I call rendering, from my back deck. I immediately notified them that I disagreed with their findings for the following reasons: The vertical and horizontal scale is incorrect; no elevations are shown for any new or existing buildings; no elevation shown for the actual picture location; no cross-section showing the direct line over the proposed buildings with elevations and distances; and the disclaimers allow them to present misleading information without any repercussions. By using Google Earth Pro to accurately calculate the actual finished elevation, it is 282 feet above sea level, the variance, if the variance is granted. To put that in perspective, it's 44 feet higher than the existing hospital, 30 feet higher than the Villas, and it's 20 feet higher than Ralph's. And these elevations are taken from the highest point of all three of those buildings. Their drawings never indicate a final elevation. And I'm sure this is why they don't want to do story polls, because if they do, it's going to show how massive and detrimental it's going to be. The city should demand story polls so everyone involved can see and understand the actual impacts. My next concern, you've indicated the four stories towards the rear of the proposed site is consistent with the four-story elevations at the rear of the Villas. The two sites should never be compared. The Villas were required to use retaining walls to lower, to lower the front view height to 35 feet, allowing them to meet the 45-foot in the back. Memorial is utilizing retaining walls for just the opposite. They're raising, they're raising the back of the property prior to the buildings on the average of eight and a half feet, using retaining walls up to 10 feet high. They're also raising the southeast corner up six feet. The retaining walls will enhance the rooftop ocean views that require variance and provides no density.
Thank you, Mr. Monks. Next speaker, Linda Rogers, followed by Ken Rogers and Rona Henry.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Linda Rogers, and I live on Campanilla in Seapoint Estates. I wasn't given a gas card to show up, but I thought I would drive over here anyway, as I heard other members had been given a gas card. Anyway, I'm glad that a senior apartment complex is going to be constructed, but I don't approve of it in its current form. It's a good thing that there will be some very low-income units, but there are only 20 as of now, and as was spoken by Memorial Care, people kept emphasizing how glad they were that their relatives can have affordable senior housing. Fortunately, these 20 units aren't going to go very far. In reality, the rent will be above market rate due to the location of the building, the view, and the fact that it is brand-new construction. I'm also worried about the safety of all our neighborhoods due to the extra traffic and lack of parking that is available on-site. We're talking about residents who are 55 years and older. I can guarantee that the majority of those that rent here will be of a two-car household. Where are the extra cars? Where are the extra cars going to park? There isn't any side streets where parking can be utilized. Ralph's parking lot's a nightmare. That basically leaves the medical building parking lots across the street. J-walking is going to be legal in California. Does that mean that these people are going to be parked across the street and then crossing, jaywalking across Community de los Maris? We hear cars at alarming speeds racing up and down Community de los Maris at hours, all hours of the night, and then there's already been fatalities on Community de los Maris in the past. The Design Review Committee repeatedly requested that Memorial Care reduce the size of the building, the height of the building, and/or improve on the parking spaces. Instead, Memorial Care continues to push the same plan to you. All of you on the planning commission, the city council, and the mayor represent the city of San Clemente and its residents. You do not represent Memorial Care or any of the other businesses to want to shove something down our throats, which goes against the bylaws of the city. The size of the building is too dense. If they could just remove the fourth floor, keep the height at the current forty-five limit, I think that would probably solve a lot of the problems that's happening with this project. That would eliminate thirty-eight units, which would also help with the parking situation. On a by note, we live at fifteen Campanella, and they didn't show our view on the simulation, but when they presented at our community, our view would be totally gone. And I know views aren't guaranteed, they aren't that important, but it is to us. We moved in the house eleven years ago. It was our dream home. We have a view that looks out over the hospital. We have the trees, we have the ocean, we can see San Clemente Island, and we have the sky. The building would be in our face, and it would go up to the top of the ocean. We would see sky and building, and that wasn't why we moved here. That wasn't, we don't want to lose that full-on view. Thank you very much for hearing me. Appreciate your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ken Rogers, followed by Rona Henry, and then Carrie Betancourt.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm Ken Rogers. I have loved the Spanish Village by the Sea for over fifty years. In nineteen sixty-nine, I lived in Walnut and Rancross Country. Our first practice was at T Street Beach. I fell in love with the charm of our city and at age seventeen vowed to someday call San Clemente my home. It took forty years, but in 2011, my wife Linda and I were able to purchase a smaller home with a nice view of the ocean, trees, and over the top of the hospital. We purchased the home for the view. The views are source of peace and tranquility. If Memorial Care has granted all the variance and incentives, the peace, tranquility, and view will go away. Our property value will diminish by hundreds of thousands of dollars, and this is not an exaggeration. The same holds true for many of our neighbors. If the variances and incentives are granted, they will be setting precedent for future construction. This will have a very negative impact on our city. If the variance and incentives are allowed, future projects will demand the same similar concessions. This will forever change our city. It will no longer represent the Spanish Village by the Sea. Do you want a similar density to the apartments on Crown Valley in Laguna Niguel, or on Jamboree in Irvine, or on Catella in Anaheim? I, excuse me. Or do you want the safety? Yes, safety and the charm of the Spanish Village by the Sea. In conclusion, if the project is built with all the variances and incentives, the project will not fit in our community. There are no four-story structures on the right-hand side of Community de los Maris between the freeway and the Villas. If the project is developed within code, everybody wins. Memorial Care would have a reasonable profit, very low-income seniors will have additional housing, and there will be housing options for other seniors. In addition, our community will remain reasonably safe, and Ole Hansen's vision for San Clemente will remain alive. This is clear. The project will either be about maximizing Memorial's care return on its investment or keep San Clemente's Village by the Sea for all to enjoy. This historical decision is up to you. If I'm correct, story polls are required in Dana Point and Laguna Beach. Given what Memorial Care is requesting, it is my opinion that this project warrants it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next is Rona Henry, followed by Carrie Betancourt, and then Ed Betancourt.
Hi, I'm Rona Henry. I am chair of Welcoming Neighbors Home, a coalition of people in South Orange County, including San Clemente, who advocate for affordable housing. I'm also a member of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. When we heard this afternoon that Memorial Care intends to make eight percent of the housing of these units to be for very low-income, we were delighted. While we had hoped for even more units, after further discussion with Memorial Care staff, we understand that this level affordability is what will pencil out. There is a huge need for affordable units at the very low-income level, more so than at the low and moderate affordable levels, because frankly, at the low and moderate levels, those market rates, those rents are quite close to market rate. We're very appreciative of Memorial Care that is understanding the needs of the community because we believe that housing is important, an important determinant of health. As planning commissioners, you are well aware of the regional housing needs allocation for San Clemente, which calls for nine hundred and eighty-two units of housing, with two hundred and eighty-two very low and a hundred and sixty-four low. Note, more need for very low income. This project with two hundred and fifty homes are very much needed, and with the inclusion of eight percent of the units as affordable to very low-income seniors, this large site represents a wonderful opportunity to begin to fill the need for homes, especially for the lower-income seniors. San Clemente's recent housing element indicates that there are six hundred and thirty-eight elderly renter households that are severely cost-burdened, meaning they pay over fifty percent of their income on housing. This project will mean that fewer seniors will be at risk for homelessness. We applaud Memorial for being so attuned to the needs of the lower-income seniors. We wish to voice our very strong support for this project, and we urge you to support it with the revised plans for the affordability. Thank you for your time and your community service, and thank you, Memorial Care, for being responsive to community needs. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Carrie Betancourt, followed by Ed Betancourt, and then Dr. Navnit Bodhu.
Planning Commission, my name is Carrie Betancourt, and I live at Four Viegalita. It is my understanding through looking at design review subcommittee minutes that the project has been discussed on the record multiple times. Each time, feedback on height, massiveness, density have been given, but clearly, the proposed project still exceeds city zoning maximums and does not incorporate the DRSC's design recommendations. At the August twenty-fourth meeting, the comments were more intentional. Projects in surrounding cities like Dana Point and Laguna Niguel make people afraid of what San Clemente will become. This density is larger than what the zone allows. There are several exceptions, and the applicant is making a massive request. This project with the proposed massing and density make it hard sell and DRSC does not think it can be supported. In addition to having a height over the forty-five-foot maximum, the density as measured by floor-area ratio is point eight-nine, which is seventy-eight percent over the maximum of point five. Planning Commission, please do not recommend the project be approved as currently proposed. It compromises the architecture of a city and due to its unit and resident density creates public safety issues, as others have attested. In addition, there were comments made about the density bonus law, which I've tried to understand over the last few weeks. There are concessions, and there are some assumptions that are built into it. A concession is reduction in site development standards, a modification of zoning code, or architectural design. Those, site development standards was lumped into, you get that, and that the only thing they were asking for was height. So I would say to each of you, if you're not aware of these, and I, again, am a novice, so I don't claim to be an expert here, but I would definitely look at this because it felt like some of those things were just part of the package that you had to assume as not even a concession, as there's only one concession that can be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Betancourt, followed by Dr. Navnit Bodhu, and then James Watkins.
Okay. My name is Ed Betancourt. I live in Seapoint Estates, and I'm here to, first of all, read an online petition we put online. We put it out there a couple days ago, and just to our residents, and we've got about a hundred people already signed on to this. And let me read it to you. "We, the undersigned homeowners of residents of Seapoint Estates in San Clemente, California, petition the planning commission and the city council of San Clemente to reject the Memorial Care senior housing project at six fifty-four Community de los Maris as currently proposed." Those three words are key. We're not saying, "Don't do this." We're saying, "As currently proposed." And you've heard some of these things already, but exceeding the city height limit of forty-five feet, the city's three-story limit, allowing the project's proposed shared parking program, and we've talked about that a little bit today, and then the two hundred and fifty units. I know there's a slide up there that showed three hundred and fifty. We could have done that, but we only did two fifty. Two fifty's a big, I'm not sure what happened there.
I don't think his time was restarted correctly. Sorry about that, Mr. Betancourt. Keep going, and if it gets too long-winded, then we'll...
Okay. So the two fifty units is still pretty, pretty massive, okay, as far as the density goes? So we believe that the forty-five feet exceeding that, the three-story limit, that's just in the shared parking program, just too many units for a six-point-one-acre site. We also believe it has serious impacts on public safety due to insufficient parking as a result of the flawed sharing parking program. We also believe all those things impact the ocean views, Catalina Island views, which some of these people have had since the nineteen eighties. There's kind of an implied contract with the city when you set up a limit on heights that, "I can buy a house and know that it's going to be this high." When you just do a variance, that implied contract with a resident is gone. They bought a house based on that. They invested money to, you know, to get those views, and now that money, their views are gone. They're going to lose that money. Plus, more importantly, like a couple of them already said, the views that they bought that house for, for their, you know, retirement or whatever, they're gone. That's huge, okay? What else? Oh, and the story poll analysis, we really believe that needs to be done, and I'm going to get a little more into that because I have some comments on that. Seapoint could support the appropriate and responsible redevelopment and hospital site as a senior housing and medical office use if the project was reduced forty-five feet, three stories, without the shared parking. Now, a couple things, story polls, okay? There's a reason, it's kind of the elephant in the room, why those aren't going up. It's going to cause people to take notice of what's going on there. People don't know, okay? We didn't find out for two or three months, two or three months ago, that this project was even going. One of our residents sent it to us. I started drilling down and looking at the links, and I was, we were shocked. We had no clue. So we started, you know, getting together and mobilizing as we did. So people just don't know. If those story polls are up, people are going to go, "What is going on there?" Okay? Also, as they mentioned, the Google Earth and things like that, they don't show, that's not their core competency, that program. It's not to render views and where buildings are and things like that. That's not the core competency, so...
Mr. Betancourt?
It's not doing well there.
Consider this a thirty-second warning.
Okay, okay. So I think the exposure is a problem there. The forty-five, like I said, the implied contract with the residents, and also, what else did I have here? Oh, we've had a couple, just in the last couple weeks, we've had developers and people that have big rental units and so forth and apartment complexes, and they've come to us in the last week suddenly realizing what this project really is. So they're just figuring this out. This thing is running so fast that, you know, we don't know what's going on with it, and we had to catch up, and then you had people that were, you know, that are going to fly down Los Maris.
Thank you, Mr. Betancourt.
They're not going to see those story polls. They're not going to know what's going on.
Next speaker is Dr. Navnit Bodhu, followed by James Watkins, and then Susie Lance.
I thank the chairman and the planning commissioners for giving me an opportunity to talk. My name is Dr. Navnit Bodhu, and I live at seventy-three Marbella. I'm a resident of San Clemente for more than twenty years. I actually had an opportunity to work and serve the residents of San Clemente at the San Clemente Hospital, when the hospital was a multi-specialty, a comprehensive care hospital. It provided care for ER, medical care, in-hospital medical care, surgical care, a maternity ward, and an ICU. I would like to talk about the burden the density bonus requested is going to cause. It has a problem with the availability of healthcare and over-utilization of emergency medical services in San Clemente. So a brief history, San Clemente Hospital was built in nineteen seventy-one, when the San Clemente population was under seventeen thousand people. In three cities, Dana Point, San Juan Capitano, and San Clemente, together, the population was under twenty-six thousand people. Today, the three cities' population is over a hundred and thirty-five thousand people. So if you ask any doctor, they'll attest to that. With increasing age, you need increasing medical care to maintain and improve health. So since 2016, Memorial Care has closed our local hospital, which provided this comprehensive, multi-specialty medical care. And now Memorial Care is planning a senior living facility, which adds a burden of two hundred and fifty units, needing much higher medical care. And, right, the one exit of the freeway, Camino Estrella, we have, this would be the fifth senior facility. There are two on the west side, and this is the third one on the east side. This is going to cause a big strain on emergency medical services that includes paramedics and delivery of care, the offices, and the medical care. The proposed medical office of seventy-five hundred square foot is too small. It will never replace the emergency care or the quality or the intensity of care provided in the ER or any other specialty care provided in the hospital. And with growing traffic conditions on IFI, our chance of getting a care at the hospital, at Mission Hospital, is getting more and more distant. And in addition to that, Mission is a trauma center where they may be caught up with bigger problems or bigger medical severe conditions. So I request the planning commission to take this into consideration in your approval...
Thank you, doctor. Staff, the yellow light isn't coming on as a warning to people. Is that, can we get that working?
Yes, we'll fix that.
Thank you. And I might suggest to people, I apologize, the yellow light hasn't been coming on. Hopefully, we'll get it working, but I might suggest you set a timer on your, or stopwatch on your phone, and that way you can kind of monitor it on time, because we definitely hope that you get to all of your most important points. Next will be James Watkins, followed by Susie Lance and Dr. Hitesh Patel.
My name's James Watkins. I live at twenty-eight Caia Calerosa. I've been a resident for San Clemente for twenty-two years now. I have about seventeen family members on about a three-mile radius in San Clemente, They range from the ages from five to ninety-two. My ninety-two-year-old grandma has lived here since the nineteen sixties, and for the longstanding members of the community, I feel we need affordable houses for them to maintain a part of the community that they helped build. I think it's so important to approve this project, the benefits of the whole family, multiple generations continuing to remain close and experience the joys together. I strongly support this project because we can't afford to let another family separate. Now's your chance to act. Please vote to keep our families together and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Susie Lance, followed by Dr. Hitesh Patel, and then Richard Palas.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Susie Lance, and I serve as the CEO of the San Clemente Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to relay tonight the chamber's support for the Memorial Care Senior Housing and Healthcare Center redevelopment project. The chamber is pleased to see the expansion of Memorial Care Medical Services in the city with a combined urgent care and health center provided on this site, which will be open to all San Clemente residents. This means that residents will be able to access physicians, specialty care services, and wellness experts in a one-stop location. Excuse me. Additionally, Memorial Care has committed to a design that we believe is... Additionally, Memorial Care has committed to a design that we believe is sensitive to the community and fits within the architectural character of its surroundings. With new residents comes more customers for our local businesses, including the restaurants, retail stores, and medical offices, which are just within a short walk of this site. Further, the job opportunities that will be generated during construction, as well as permanent healthcare positions at the healthcare center. Finally, Memorial Care's proposal delivers on the San Clemente Chamber of Commerce's mission to enhance our city's economic development and improve quality of life. The chamber recommends your support for Memorial Care Senior Housing and the healthcare project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Hitesh Patel, followed by Richard Palace, and then Debbie Salahi.
Good evening, council members and planning commission members. My name is Dr. Hitesh Patel. I'm a neurologist here in San Clemente, and have been practicing for nearly 10 years on Camino de los Maras. I support the senior living housing facility and the medical facility that Memorial Care is offering to plan. It's going to, in my opinion, help resolve two needs of our community here. One, senior living, and two, expand medical services for the community. As a neurologist, I deal with patients that have cognitive decline, and there's numerous studies that have shown senior living facilities that foster social interactions among seniors, helps slow down cognitive decline, and improve mental health. I refer patients all the time to specialists. We have a lack of specialists in San Clemente. Many of my patients and the seniors in this community have a difficult time driving, getting on the freeway, going to Mission Viejo. This will offer other opportunities for those patients, so they don't have to actually leave the city to obtain some of those services. The urgent care, I think, will also be of added benefit. We all know the wait times at many urgent cares. Oftentimes, patients will leave because the wait times are too long, and this will also help the need of the seniors in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Palace, followed by Debbie Salahi, and then Lawrence Chang.
Okay, just start it. Members of the Planning Commission, city staff, and guests, my name is Richard Palace, and I'm a resident of San Clemente. I, and I believe that most of the residents in San Clemente support the addition of senior housing in our community. However, I do not support this project in its present form. I'll try to communicate some of my concerns. They include community safety, size, density, parking, and a number of requested concessions and variances that are not in the public interest of our Spanish village by the sea. Now, I'm going to jump so I don't have to get the hook. The elephant in the room is what not is mentioned in the TIA, the Traffic Analysis. This should also be a big concern for the community's safety, and I'm surprised that it wasn't studied or mentioned, is the Orange County Fire Authority Station Number 50, which is very close by. That fire station serves nearby San Clemente Villas and the many other senior living facilities on Estrella side of the freeway. It's important to note that EMTs now have to transport critical patients to either Mission Viejo or Laguna Beach hospitals. More delays due to traffic increase, congestion, and unacceptable will be an unacceptable and potentially lethal. I believe this issue requires additional and extensive safety analysis by our city traffic engineer. Remember, every time a fire truck rolls, a private ambulance follows. Too much traffic. The parking proposed for this project will be very inadequate, and there is limited, or no overflow parking identified. This will lead to jaywalking, to poached parking across Las Maras and elsewhere. Speaking of jaywalking, residents will probably tire of eating at the Habit and the Restaurants and the Ralphs and Stater Brothers Centers. They will also walk to Blue Moon, Sushi, Fratello's, Nellows, and the others across Las Maras. Imagine seniors walking home after a dinner or dark, after a few shots of sake or bottles of wine on that busy and fast-moving street. A recipe for disaster. The traffic analysis, effect analysis also re-mentions the city's plan to add bike lanes to that section of Las Maras. How do you think that's going to work out? In addition, I'm also requesting story polls to be installed for the project, for the Planning Commission and the community to also see. This will confirm simulations. Again, trust but verify. Therefore, I respectfully request that you do not approve this overbuilt project. Please send it back to the developer and ask that it be right-sized for the project and our community. Thank you. Three minutes, three seconds.
Thank you, Richard. Debbie Salahi, Salehi, Lawrence Chang, and then Robert Henry.
Good evening, members of the, excuse me, members of the Planning Commission staff and guests. I'm here tonight to urge you to approve the 654 Camino de los Maras master project. Additional senior housing is very much needed. I understand that 62% of our elderly renters are lower income. If you approve the full 250 units, Memorial will provide 8% of these units as very low income. This project is the perfect opportunity to help fulfill some of your re-numbers, and will help seniors. And I think that this is the hardest group to meet, and I strongly recommend that all of those units be for very low-income seniors. You know, we need 282. That seems to be the hardest one that, in projects. Memorial is responding to the community needs. I'm very supportive of Memorial Care Project, and I hope you will, I hope you will approve the project for the full 250 units and eight very low-income senior housing. It is much needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lawrence Chang, sorry.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lawrence Chang. I've been in the community for about 24 years, serving the senior population. I'm a geriatrician, and full disclosure, I'm not employed by Memorial Care, and I didn't receive a gas card. So, I just have three quick points for three minutes. The first point is, I agree with the commission that my office is right across the street from the proposed site, from the hospital, former hospital. It's 665 Camino de los Maras. I'm on the third floor. So, just being here for the past 24 years, the parking and the traffic is horrible. I mean, it's not safe in our building. It's not safe in the next building. It's not safe in the villas. I just can't imagine Google Earth predicting how the traffic's going to be. So, I agree with the commission that the traffic is a huge issue. My second point is, I'm on the third floor of that building, and their architects didn't realize this, but my patio, my patients get to appreciate a panoramic ocean view from my patio, so they're going to miss that if this thing goes up. So, I mean, that's a little selfish thing for my patients, but I think, just want to point that out, in the 665 building, they should do the Google Earth and see what it looks like, or I won't have my ocean view anymore. My third point is, in 2016, Memorial Care had the opportunity to take care of my patients by keeping in a hospital an emergency room open. Instead, they decided to close it, and it had a huge impact. I don't know how many of my patients have died, or couldn't make it to the ER in time because of Memorial Care. I mean, I'm just telling the truth here. I hope their goal is to really take care of seniors and not just look after the profit. So, the whole point of closing the hospital is because it wasn't profitable, but I hope they're doing this really for seniors, not to just make a profit. That's all I have to say. And I agree with the people in Seapoint Estates. They have a concern, their property values are going to go down, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Robert Henry, followed by Mara Mikulak, and then Amanda Q.
Good evening. My name is Robert Henry, and I'm here to read a public comment for Kathy Estefani, who cannot attend tonight's meeting. These are her words. Hello, my name is Kathy Estefani. I come before you tonight wearing two hats. I am the chair of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition, and I'm also a senior retiree who lives in San Clemente. My husband and I bought our North Beach home way back in 1986. Speaking as both a housing advocate and a local senior, I am thrilled that Memorial Care has agreed to increase the percentage of affordable units in its senior housing project to 8% of very low income. This is a hugely significant win for the senior community in San Clemente. As I'm sure you know, 62% of the city's elderly renters are low-income. They desperately need affordable housing, but our city has very little to offer. That will now change. With this decision by Memorial Care to increase significantly the percentage of affordable units in its senior project, 20 very low-income seniors now will be able to retain, remain in our wonderful community in homes they can't afford. Seniors will not have to move away from the city where they raised their kids and where they've lived their lives, because rising rents have outpaced their social security income or their monthly pension check. In agreeing to increase the number of affordable units to 8%, Memorial Care has chosen to put the needs of our seniors above its own desires for profits. This choice demonstrates Memorial Care staying true to its mission, which is to improve the health and well-being of individuals, families, and our communities. Memorial Care recognizes that each patient's health is tied intricately to that patient's housing. Memorial Care doctors know that if a patient is housing insecure, or God forbid, becomes homeless, serious health consequences follow. By including more very low-income housing in its senior housing development, Memorial Care will help protect many of San Clemente's economically vulnerable seniors from both housing insecurity and homelessness. We congratulate Memorial Care on its generous decision to provide more affordable housing than it is legally obligated to. We believe Memorial Care's senior housing project will be a valuable addition to our community, improving the health and well-being of San Clemente's very low-income seniors by creating more housing than it is affordable then. On behalf of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition, I urge the Planning Commission to approve the development plans that's proposed with 250 total units, 20 of them now made affordable to very low-income seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mara Mikulak, followed by Amanda Q. and J.R. Owens.
Good evening, chair, commissioners, and staff. My name's Mara Mikulak, and I'm a social worker here in Southernmost County, mostly in San Clemente, working with people who are experiencing homelessness. And my notes. Ah, I'm sorry. Okay. I have special interest in this property because both of my kids were born there, and I'm just kidding. I understand that Memorial Care is planning to give the city much-needed housing. Every bit of rental housing, a men to give the city much-needed housing. Every bit of rental housing immensely helps the community, and they're including even more affordable housing than is required. I want to say, "Bravo Memorial Care." And speaking in advance, for some of the folks who will benefit from this housing, thank you. Nonetheless, as an advocate for people who are homeless, I consider my job to sometimes be that of an idealist, so I still have an ask for the Planning Commission. Let me start with some brief stories. I worked recently with one woman who was a renter and worked and raised her family in the same home for 20 years. When she became disabled, a few years ago, her landlord generously lowered her rent so that she could afford to stay in the home. Fast forward to about six months ago, when a new owner took over, raising the rent, and landing her on the street, where she now lives in her car. Even with assistance from the federal government through a Section 8 voucher or similar, she will need affordable housing. Our senior center here in town reports that up to, there are up to 20 seniors living in their cars in San Clemente, and we know that there are many more than that who fly under the radar. Just like a senior veteran that we're helping who has a housing assistance voucher from the VA, but still needs housing that is affordable. He's on the street now, looking for somewhere affordable where he can use his voucher. About six months ago, I was able to help a senior gentleman who was unhoused in San Clemente get into housing. He, in fact, was one of the handful of people who were left in the designated camping lot that we had here in town at its end. At the time, Mayor Bain said that everyone was expected to be housed in just a few weeks. Well, it took over two years, through no fault of his own, and he was only able to get into housing because he had an emergency housing voucher from COVID funding, and because I had applied him to an affordable housing complex in San Juan two years ago. Another gentleman I worked with also had an emergency housing voucher, but because there's not sufficient affordable housing, and I mean in the whole county, it's not just here, he never found a place to rent, and instead, he died on the street here in town with a voucher in his hand, not literally. Housing and affordable housing is the difference between life and death for many. There are others all over South County who have these vouchers I spoke of, who can't find housing. Seniors are the fastest-growing demographic experiencing homelessness. But affordable housing, as you know, obviously, is not just for homeless people. In fact, it's likely that more people would be helped from ever becoming homeless than would be lifted off the street.
Thank you, Mara.
Thank you.
Amanda Q., followed by J.R. Owens, and then Dr. P. Kalimata.
Hello, planning commissioners. My name is Amanda Quintanilla. I'm a resident of San Clemente of over 50 years. I'm a retired registered nurse, and I strongly oppose this Memorial Care senior residential development due to the height requirement that exceeds the height requirement, and it should be at a three-story limit. However, I'm very concerned about this because I participated in the hospital roundtable, and I sat with Dr. Schaefer regarding that we didn't need, that they, he had mentioned that we really didn't need a hospital. So, I feel like we were duped. We were led to believe that we didn't, that Memorial Care didn't need to have a hospital. You know, one of the residents just spoke previously and said that Memorial Care invested in the communities they serve. That is not true. They should have done more to preserve San Clemente, or Memorial Care, San Clemente Hospital, and they did not. You know, I feel like I'm at a planning, at a TCA Transportation Corridor Agency meeting, because a couple of things, people that spoke there in support of toll roads were the Orange County Business Council, or the, or the, one of the, sorry, or, anyway, sorry, I lost my train of thought, but also, NOSA Men Attorneys, which is, the TCA attorneys are here. So, I'm very concerned what is happening, because I feel like we were under, we were misrepresented that we didn't need a hospital, and of course, I think we do. A couple of doctors spoke, and I agree with them, and agree with Seapoint Estates with their petition. There's 100 people that have signed so far, and we're going to get the word out. I strongly oppose this. I do not want this to go further. Please do not approve this development. I really appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Thank you. J.R. Owens, followed by Dr. P. Kalimata, and then Terry Witt-Rydell. Oh, actually, no, not Terry. Michael Gleason.
Honorable commission, fellow residents, and citizens, my name is J.R. Owens. I am a recent, recently-retired Army officer who's returning home after a 24-year sojourn, and I'm also a first-year law student at UC Irvine. First of all, I sent my comments via email, and I appreciate you addressing a lot of those, so I went with labor some of those points. I particularly want to thank Commissioner Prescott for starting the conversation on the density in terms of the low-income housing units. I also want to thank Memorial Care for raising the proposal to 8%. But I'd also still like to point out that during the conversation on the density, the representatives from Memorial Care kind of spoke in hypotheticals on how increasing the density would affect their bottom line, which, to me, shows one of two things, either they just don't have the numbers on them, or they haven't done the homework. And the city has. I'll point to another of the studies that one of the other speakers talked to in the EPS report 2021, stating that residential rental projects with fifteen percent lower-income housing can still produce a profit for a developer. The way I see it, the cities put their money where their mouth is. It can show that you can do this at fifteen percent. I would encourage you to start at fifteen and negotiate from there, not from five up. And, you know, have them show to, prove to you that, hey, why can't you do fifteen? And then take into consideration the comments and concerns of the citizens and the implications that may have at fifteen percent before settling on eighteen or on eight, excuse me. And just to keep in mind that, like some of the other speakers have said, you know, this has tangible and real, real effects for some of the most hard, the citizens of our, of our communities who are the most vulnerable. So before the ink is dry and the hands are shaped, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, make sure you're doing the most you can for the most vulnerable here. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Kalimata, followed by Michael Gleason and then Dave Simpson.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the Planning Commission for having me. I'm Dr. Kalimata. I live in Seapoint Estates, and I'm here to address two particular problems. One, I do not support the current system of building two hundred and sixty units for the simple reason, has somebody ever done a traffic study? For a guy who lives there and commutes to Mission Hospital, it used to take me ten minutes about fifteen years ago. Today, it takes me twenty-five minutes to reach Mission Hospital. Why? There's a tremendous amount of traffic congestion on I-5 North and I-5 South. I-5 North going from six-thirty in the morning to ten o'clock in the morning. In the evening, from three to about six-thirty. There's a tremendous amount of traffic congestion. And now you want to add two hundred and sixty units to that area? That is going to really, really clog the off-ramps both on I-5 North and I-5 South. That's what I'm here to say. And the next thing I was going to say was, whatever happened to our water shortage or power blackouts? And here we are approving a two hundred and sixty-unit building in spite of the water shortage and the power blackouts. That's something which is incomprehensible to me. I do not support it in this present environment for the simple reason, somebody needs to do a traffic study to see how much traffic is there going to be in that area. For people who want to support it, yes. I enjoyed listening to you guys, but have you lived in that area? That's what I'm asking. Since when did the city of San Clemente, a Spanish village by the sea, become a concrete jungle by the sea? Thanks.
Thank you. Michael Gleason, followed by Dave Simpson and then Mark McGuire.
Hello. Good evening, members of the committee. My name is Dr. Michael Gleason. I also serve the members of our community. I've been a San Clemente resident for over twenty years. I do live in Seapoint Estates, so I do have an interest to represent that community as well. I've been visiting San Clemente since the seventies. I used to come here. I'm from Los Angeles. Originally, my family used to come here on vacation, and I always had such a wonderful, you know, impression of this area and always had, you know, dreamed one day to live here, and that my dream came true twenty years ago when I was able to, you know, buy a house here in South San Clemente and have really seen the, the community change so much in just that past, you know, forty, fifty years. And in some ways, change is a good thing, but I think that, you know, too much change can really affect the soul and the, and the impression that, you know, the city leaves on people. When Ole Hanson envisioned, you know, the Spanish Village by the Sea in nineteen twenty-five, I think he had a very different idea of how things would turn out. And I think if he could see what it's become now, I don't think he would recognize it. Even just, you know, you drive to certain areas you haven't been in in a few years, and you can't recognize how much everything has been, you know, overdeveloped. And if you look at the definition of a village, it's a small community in a rural area. And by no means are we a village by the sea any longer, but, you know, change, you know, has to happen. And we do support, you know, redeveloping this, this area across the street because, you know, it can't sit vacant forever, but we do harbor objections to the height and density. And living at Three Marbella, I can tell you that my view personally is greatly impacted. I have a beautiful view right now of San Clemente Island out of my kitchen, and the view simulation was accurate in showing that that view would be gone. And, you know, I think that they said four residences are affected. I would say that at least twenty or thirty residences are going to be affected by a view, and there should be story polls of other members of Sted, but overall, I just feel that this approval is going too quickly, and I do agree with some redevelopment, but with more careful consideration by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Simpson, followed by Mark McGuire and then Larry Culbertson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for this time and this discussion. My name is Dave Simpson. I'm Director of Government Affairs for Cox Communications. We provide broadband service for the residents and businesses of San Clemente. But more than that, we are part of the community. We invest in your chamber. We invest in Boys and Girls Club, Peer Pride, and other organizations. We are in the communities we serve, and we believe, and I know, that's just like Memorial Care. I'd like to acknowledge your service as Planning Commissioners. I happen to be a Planning Commissioner in the city of Orange, and appreciate the discussion you're having. I must say, having a senior project come before, a housing project come before a Planning Commission is always, to me, a very great opportunity. As was mentioned earlier by our friends from Orange County Business Council, that segment of our society, the aging folks, are the only growing part of our, our, our population. The pandemic put a spotlight on the need for quality internet services. It turned a nice-to-have into a need-to-have, and where I'm going with this is the issue of telehealth. If you ask anyone from Memorial Care or any other healthcare provider, they're going to have a lot to say about the future of telehealth and what that will mean to our communities, including here in San Clemente. Digital literacy is another issue, and Cox and others would be pleased to get in with seniors to help them access the internet. That's an area we, we spend a lot of time in and the space we like to work in. Finally, I'd like to say that delay is no friend of cost escalation. You know this, and I believe that parcel has been vacant for maybe four to six years. I'm not sure exactly, but a very long time. So thank you for your consideration, and I encourage your support.
Thank you. Mark McGuire, followed by Larry Culbertson and then Jimmy Zhou, Jimmy Joe.
Good evening, Chair McCann and members of the commission. My name's Mark McGuire, fifty-one-year resident, so one more than Amanda. I support the reuse of the site. I generally think the project, there's a good project to be had here, but it is a big project on a tight site. And the applicant talked about the size of the project could be even bigger by right, but that presupposes that the general plan amendment and the zone change have been approved already and that the parcel map has been approved to subdivide the property. And so then you're by right have to give these concessions on what is now the senior residential parcel. So it's a little bit getting the cart before the horse. Having said that, I think the site supports a big project. And, you know, with the caveat that, you know, the residents that live near there, they have legitimate concerns about departures from objective standards that will impact their views. Just the nature of the project, how much is being proposed is creating some constraints that I feel like there's some minor work at least that needs to be done to make the project better. And I'll just hit a couple of quick things. One thing just to comment and keep in mind is that one of the exits is a right turn only such that those seniors are going to have to dash across three lanes to get to the left-turn lane to make the U-turn. That's, you know, just tells you the type of constraint. And then the other entrance has a lot of things going on, including that medical office. But I'll just hit three things with the time I have, and I'll get yanked when the time's up. On parking, the shared parking, again, I sent some comments by email. The, it's the medical office that, site that doesn't have the full number of parking spaces. I think it has twenty-two spaces on its site, and so it requires that shared parking. Now, I stand corrected. LSA did look at shared use during the daytime. They didn't just base it on the overall demand for the project, you know, seniors and medical combined. They did do a shared use of the visitor, the guest in the medical office. But I have to tell you that I would like to see their work when they say that between two and three PM on a weekday, there's only ten spaces being used in the guest for the two hundred and fifty senior housing, and all thirty-eight of the medical office spaces are being used. So at that point, they're saying there's only forty-eight spaces being used. But in fact, you know, that's presupposing that only ten spaces are being used by guests or visitors to a two hundred and fifty-unit senior housing project. I'd like to see that work. Second comment I have is on the usable open space. And again, it's a big project. It's a tight site. But some of the open space that they're taking credit for are the corners, you know, where the monument signs are and corner where there's a tree and some landscaping, you know. So with all due respect, there's some good quality spaces. I would just ask-
Thank you, Mr. McGuire.
-that they look at for some opportunities for some additional open space.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Larry Culbertson, followed by Jimmy Joe and then Terry Witt-Rydell.
It's always tough to follow Mark. He's so eloquent, but I'll try. My name's Larry Culbertson, San Clemente resident for fifteen years. I support the idea of senior housing at the site, but I do not support this project. The proposed project is not consistent with the general plan. It's too massive, and the proposed architecture is not consistent with the design review guidelines, the design guidelines. I had a spiel here on the comments on the density bonus and the waivers, but I think that's been pretty well-covered. I'm not sure if we're going to even get anywhere with that. So I'd like to move on to the architecture. The Design Review Subcommittee was set up to preview projects and make recommendations to improve their quality before they came before you. The project was, was sent to DRSC three times, and it was given many recommendations, some of which were followed, some were not. The DRSC was not supportive. I hope all of you had a chance to listen to the three DRSC meetings. I'm saddened to see that the, two of the Commissioners who were on that, Commissioner Camp and Cosgrove, were not here tonight. That's unfortunate. With respect to the density, the project would have a floor-area ratio of zero-point-eight-nine. That would yield two thousand, three hundred, two hundred and thirty-one thousand square feet. The existing standard of zero-point-five would allow only one hundred and forty-three thousand. This is the reason that they need that large fourth story. DRSC tried hard to convince them to reduce the density to eliminate the need for the fourth story. There were comments like, "There is no justification for a fourth floor," and "Too much building for the site, and it cannot meet the guidelines." All of those comments fell on deaf ears. If the applicant was willing to reduce the density a little, it would allow for a little setback on that third story. That would reduce the massive appearance of the building. But they are unwilling to decrease the size of the project. The fenestration, the arrangement of doors and windows is horrible. There has to be more variation in size, shape, position, maybe some iron grills. DRSC tried to talk them into that, but didn't get anywhere, as far as I could see. The stacked rows of identical windows is just not what Ole Hanson envisioned for his Spanish Vision by the Sea. Please deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Joe, followed by Terry Witt-Rydell. And if anybody else who hasn't spoken wants to speak, please come up and fill out a speaker card. As of now, we have two speakers left, but if you wanted to speak, you can.
Thank you, Planning Commission and council members. I, my name is Jimmy Joe, and I work in the city. And my partner actually lives in the city, and he couldn't make it because he got sick. Otherwise, he'd be here, Michael Flanders. He lives in the city. And he actually, I was going to speak on mine, and he was going to speak on his, but I'm going to try to use the three minutes to go over what he wrote to me. He said, "The proposal looks to construct seven thousand five hundred adjacent living facility for a modern healthcare center that will include urgent care, primary physicians, specialty physician, that would solve a lot of problems for the city of San Clemente with the state mandated housing requirements under the state regional housing needs assessments to enhance quality in life in San Clemente. It will help two hundred and fifty seniors remain in San Clemente." And he says, he says the word "remain" because we see too many people move out of here because they get too old. There's no place to go. They don't want to go to nursing homes. They want to go to a place, a building, a home that is constructed for seniors to be able to stay and not have to move into a nursing home or not have to move out of the area. So that's one of the reasons why he says it remains, including a very low, low-income senior. Modern health facility, pedestrian-friendly environment, get rid of the current abandoned ISOR. That's currently the aging hospital he's talking about. Best interest of the community to make it easier for seniors to access care and for physicians to coordinate care. The new senior village checks the boxes for senior well-being and longevity, and that's key, to stay here, right? Many patients would benefit from nearby access to doctors as well as social environment with other seniors. Well-designed mixed-use environment would provide crime prevention through design, lighting, and so forth. So I want to stop there for a second because I want to share my story. I have a client who decided that she needed to move out of her beautiful house. She loved her house, of course, but she was getting too old. She needed to move out, but she didn't want to go to a nursing home. Who does, right? So she wanted to move to a house that assisted, a whole, a housing where she could be assisted as a senior. She's old. I get it. We all get old, and my parents are really old. I know the feeling. And she decided that she needed to move. When she looked, there was nothing here in the city, so she had to move to Irvine. She looked at Laguna Woods as a possibility as well. She didn't like there. She said it was too crowded. She's used to the space, right? So she didn't like that. But so she ended up moving to Irvine, where there is a nearby doctor and nearby, I know we're getting a lot more urgent cares. I know I would love to have a hospital. If it was possible, that would be phenomenal. But we tried. I know you guys all tried, and I appreciate you guys having tried. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. The last card I have is for Terry Witt-Rydell. If anybody else wants to speak, please come fill out a card.
Good evening, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us all to present to you. It's a long night. Everybody has basically said what I want, and I want housing for seniors, but I also want a community that lives together and isn't hurt. If we don't get two hundred and fifty units, that means some people can't live here, but we still will have two hundred and fifty, or we will have maybe two hundred or a hundred and eighty units. We can ask the developer, can you make those into your eight percent? Can we have twenty affordable housing for those by having less units? I'm asking you to blend both sides of what you heard tonight. My husband was a Planning Commissioner for many, many years, and I asked him, "What was your job? What do you, what did you really do?" And he told me two things. He said, "You are responsible, we were responsible for safety and for meeting community needs." So if you can take all of the safety issues that you heard this evening and also meet the community needs and blend it together where you can satisfy most of everybody in this room, because I don't believe it's going to work well if you just do one and nothing for the other. It has to be a blend because you are safety and meeting the community needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Savina, I'll let you pronounce it. And again, anybody else who wants to speak who hasn't spoken, please- And again, anybody else who wants to speak who hasn't spoken, please come up now and fill out a card.
Good evening. Frank Savina, San Clemente resident for the last 15 years. Just want to make it short and sweet. I think some of you had concerns about parking. Parking will be an issue. Tomorrow, I'm going to see my mom in LA, she lives in a, senior living. I just don't know where I'm going to park my car tomorrow because they have the exact same issue that you guys are concerned, and I noticed some of you were asking about parking. So they have all these parking spaces, some of these residents are getting smart, they use the guest parking, park their cars over there, although they have assigned parking spaces, save their spots for their caretakers, kids coming over and all that, and, and then blocking guest parking. So definitely with the number of units that they have in their plan, it's going to be an issue. That's number one. I'm not against senior living, I'm all for it, but there, definitely parking will be an issue. I think the second thing, if they can reduce the height to three-story building, I think everybody's going to be happy and that should not be an issue. And, and as far as the presentation goes, the demonstration that they did, that Google map and all that, the angle of that view, that the views are not affected and all that, that was totally wrong, which is why they're not doing the sticks, pole sticks. And I hope you guys are not rushing to make a decision right away. I was part of that whole toll road when I lived in Reserve Community. Let's just take a look at this one more time and make sure this is something that's safe for our city, for our residents, for our seniors, and, and then make a decision. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item who has not spoken already? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up for Commissioner discussion. Does anybody want to lead off?
Well, there's a, a lot to go over.
Commission, if I could use this opportunity, just remind everybody to put their microphones on and then if you could speak close to the microphone, that would help make sure that the audience can hear.
My first question is for Jennifer and Zach on parking studies for this thing, and the traffic studies on the intersection and all. Are you satisfied that enough has been done, or is it a condition of approval that additional studies will be done to confirm the traffic studies?
So Public Works, good evening, Zach Ponson, Assistant City Engineer. Public Works has reviewed it, our outside consultant, Stand Tech, was hired on this one to review the project. We reviewed their traffic impact analysis, we are satisfied with their analysis as it is. One thing I will say, I'm not the traffic expert, Ryan Kim is, our new traffic engineer, has just come in recently though, so we did have Stand Tech before review this. One thing that Stand Tech did like to emphasize was this proposed use of senior housing is one of the lower-impact uses compared to other uses that could be in here, lower than the hospital that was there before, and lower versus any other potential residential uses or commercial uses that could come in. So when we do look at the level of service and the impact to the streets, we did see no changes in the level of service, and we were okay with the right turn right out. We specifically asked to address the weaving of them getting in, out of that right turn to get over to that signal. One thing with the benefits of that is the actual signals to the west help create a buffer to where there should be some breaks in traffic that'll help that weaving. And so some of the situation is, you know, we've looked at all those situations and we're satisfied with the studies.
Okay, while he's there, does anybody have a question for Zach? Okay, thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
I guess I'm gonna, where do we, where do I want to start? Geez. I think I'm, I'm going to start with walking through the approvals we've got to make, and the first one being a general plan amendment. And I know Mark McGuire kind of mentioned that that was something that isn't a sure thing, but we're only being asked on the general plan amendment to approve it for the CC4 zone, for that change. It's not job-specific, it's just a rezoning of a lot that's kind of a spot-zoned, it's surrounded by CC4. In the conditions, excuse me, in the resolution, I think we got a little carried away with the findings that we had to make for that. The only things we, I'm aware of, Jennifer, that we have to make are the proposed amendment is consistent with the, that's general plan, let's go over here, required findings. The proposed amendment is internally consistent with the portions of the general plan which are not being amended, and the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare. I believe those are the only two that are required by our ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
We have some other ones in here that kind of complicate the approval, but I can support the general plan amendment with the basic conditions of the findings that we have to The next one is the zoning amendment, which is dovetailed in with the general plan amendment, and I'm the same on that, that it's not specific for this project, it's making the zoning consistent with the general plan and the neighborhood, and the required findings for the zoning amendment are, the proposed amendment is consistent with the general plan, which it would be, and the proposed amendment will not adversely affect public health, safety, and welfare. And then there's one additional specific finding in addition to the general findings requirement of the specific find, oh, that's a residential district overlay, which doesn't apply here. So I could also support the zoning amendment. The tentative parcel map's the same way, it's just a lot split, very simple and straightforward. It's not necessarily this application-specific, as long as the lot split is consistent with the zone in size and whatnot, it's not saying that the commercial job is designed and meets all requirements or the residential, it's just saying it meets the zone. So the findings for that, I think, can also be made. CUP gets a little more complicated. That gives the right to the applicant and this specific project. The site plan approval and the architectural permit are the two, next two I want to talk about. Site plan and architectural permit went through design review three times, we worked with the applicant, and we made recommendations that in our vision did not affect the budget or the profitability of the project. And I do want to commend the project team, they were very professional, did a good job, they did what they were asked to do, so they were a good choice by the, by the applicant. But I do want to go to one document, 2828. And it was a letter from, a letter from the applicant, I think it was either 22 or 21. Okay, we can't, we're obligated by Sacramento here. A lot of this has been taken out of our hands, it's no longer just a local community issue, Sacramento stepped in and taken away a lot of our options on what we can do. But for design guidelines, they did not make a special request to waive them, or a concession in any of their requests. And the letter from Gregory Sanders, who is Memorial Care's attorney, said that we, we do not have the power, let's see. Standards found in the city, okay, "In addition to the foregoing, the city has been informed by Saddleback orally and in writing that strict applications of certain development standards found in the city's municipal code, design guidelines, and elsewhere would preclude construction of the senior housing portion of the project." And I contend and feel very strongly, and so do the other two design review members, that what we were asking for does not change the density, it might require reorienting some of the units, same number of units can stay to get particularly the line on Los Maris to step back per the design guidelines, and it's the most basic requirement of the design guidelines on page 14 of the city design guidelines for stepping back when you have a three-story, the third story. And it doesn't have to be the whole thing, but we ran into a stalemate there, and I would not be able to make the findings for the architectural permit based on that condition. And I think there's more that needs to be looked at there. I don't believe, and Jennifer, correct me if I'm, I'm not aware of any mechanism we have to keep them from requesting the additional story or the additional square footages, because those do affect the profitability of the project. And we are, we can only ask so much of even proof that there's an impact on profitability. But I think this one item is a hang-up for me, and it would be difficult for me to approve the architectural permit. I'm certainly in favor of the project, I do have a problem with the parking, but I don't have a solution. And I'll let it go at that for now and let somebody else jump in and talk. Let me just, before I turn this off, so general plan amendment, DRSC, and it is, order of approvals, senior housing. Okay, I'll, I'll keep studying while others are talking here.
Your, your mic is available to go back on, so. Does anybody else want to weigh in, have comments, questions?
I concur as to the findings. The project does target a community need. With that said, I do have some concerns about community safety, and I would disagree with the traffic analysis and that of the parking, but that is not what we're discussing right now. I would not be able to make a finding for the architectural permit, and I think that the project could still be well within budget if the fourth story could be accommodated and reduced. I don't think that they would lose, just having a redesign, and that's my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner McCocken?
I think my comment would be, I have a problem with the tentative parcel map when it says the site is physically suitable for the proposed density of the development, because if you look at that, the parcel map, I mean, that only, that's not sufficient parking, they have to have that easement. And I think there's a lot of conflict there between the parking of the large residential unit and the parking that really would be required for the two-story, you know, office building. I think it's kind of pushing it to say that, that the site is physically suitable because the site requires an easement to have suitable parking. That kind of conflicts with the residential, which then leads to number four, can we really say the design of the subdivision or the type of improvements is not likely to cause serious public health problems if people are, you know, walking across the street or making multiple passes through the parking lot to find a spot, you know, when they got an appointment for their doctor of the health or the building? I think that's my biggest. And again, when you go site, for the site plan permit, again, B and C, those are kind of difficult for me to make, the site is suitable for the type and intensity, and that to say categorically that the proposed development, the proposed development will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare. So I'm not under the design review, but I do take that a little bit as a friend, that we kind of asked them kindly to do a couple of things and they sort of ignored it. I'm, I'm not a member of that board. But mine, my difficulties would probably be the tentative parcel map, that that health building should have a larger, you know, piece of property, because at some point they could be disjointed with different owners. Even though I know the easement runs with the property, but still, that's a concern. Those are my comments.
Okay, any other comments? I want to get it on the record that I did meet with the developer, I think it was last week, they wanted to meet with me to just kind of go over and go through some of the, especially the view simulations and so forth, which were available for everyone tonight. I appreciate the great public output and comment, input, I should say, that's gone on tonight. We rarely get this much public input, and it's great. That being said, I think, you know, people can see there's, there's both sides to the arguments, you know, some people see it one way, and some people see it, hey, we really need these units, and, and there's a lot of benefit here. So I'm sympathetic to the concerns of the residents. I just want to make it clear that tonight, for everyone's benefit, tonight, we are not approving anything, we are recommending, we are, we are making recommendations to city council, and, and with our thoughts and our input of what we perceive. And with that being said, I think that, you know, there was some discussion at the very beginning about what we can or can't comment on, since it's recommendation-only, I, I kind of think it's fair game to, to, you know, make whatever recommendations we want. That's my opinion. Mal, is that, would you say that's supported?
That's correct.
So with all that being said, here's, I'm generally supportive of the project. I think the project is in general, I, I think it fulfills some great needs that the city has, and that, when I say the city, I really mean the residents of the city and the people of the city. The city is nothing more than the residents of it. I don't like the parking. I, I don't, I'm, I'm concerned about what I mentioned earlier, which is that not all the spa, potentially, not all the spaces will be available to everybody that wants to use the site at any given time due to reservations. So I would, in any proposed recommendation that I would want to support, it would, it would recommend to council that they, city have, that there's a lot of flexibility on a go-forward basis with the city having, being able to, in the future, re-review and re-regulate the usability and management of the parking, including potential- including potentially no reserved spaces whatsoever. Because I think, like the one gentleman said, hey, people park in the guest parking and keep their parking open. And then those reserved spaces are unavailable to whoever needs, is coming and going and needs to use the site, whether it's employees or people visiting the medical office building or so forth. So I'd love to see a recommendation about maintaining flexibility of the parking that's there. We already know it's tight to begin with, although it does meet code seemingly with the shared parking agreement. As has been mentioned, there are laws from the state that have impact on us. And we don't have a lot of flexibility to say what you can and can't do once they qualify for the density bonus. So I just want to mention that again for everyone's benefit. Regarding the view corridors, the view corridors were brought up in particular, you know, out to the ocean. I would like to see a condition in the exhibits, that kind of main center entrance, center spine, view corridor, and you've got a bunch of trees in it. I'd like to see no more than low shrubs. And I'd like to, I would recommend that to council, because that's the view corridor, there's blue ocean behind it. Let people see it. I would recommend to council that they consider a mix of income-type qualifications for the units. And I don't think we have enough information to make any kind of recommendation other than they study and consider very low, low, and moderate income units in that mix. I liked Commissioner Crandall, your suggestion about keeping the medical office building as medical. I'd like to see a condition about that, recommend a condition, that that be preserved as medical on a go-forward basis. Regarding the development agreement, I am not supportive of the development agreement. I don't see where, like I mentioned earlier, normally, the city gets a significant quid pro quo in exchange for extending out development rights for 20 years, two decades. I don't see that we're getting enough back for that. So I personally would be supportive of, it's not perfect, but I think it's pretty darn good. I'd be supportive of the unit, of the project, subject to my comments, but I'm not supportive of recommending approval of the development agreement. With that, I'm open to more discussion or emotion.
Chair, I'm thinking maybe we give the, from what I hear, the way the resolution that we are recommending is written, it's one vote for the whole thing. I would recommend that we go item by item, do a head count, and let the applicant decide whether he wants us to vote with just four members to move it along, or if they would, on their own cognizance, have it come back with these revisions, hopefully, when the whole, or a fuller body is here. I do have two more items I want to discuss before we address that.
Commissioner Crandall?
Yes.
If I could interrupt you, just on that last point that you made, I just wanted to make it clear for the commission that because there's only four members here, a unanimous vote of the four is required to either approve an application or deny an application. Anything else would be considered basically a dead vote. And either way, in any of those cases, the applicant can continue to move this project forward to the city council if they choose. There would be, staff would support, you know, their intention that they receive commission of support for the project moving forward. But in order to approve any of the applications, all four members present here today would approve it.
Thank you very much.
When you say approve, you mean recommend approval to city council?
Yes.
Because that's all we're doing, we're not approving anything.
And just one more procedural note as the commission begins to deliberate about what to do with the vote. So every application is before you except for one tonight, and that is the development agreement. So that's been discussed, it's part of the package. That was not part of the notice scene, so it's going to actually trail to a subsequent planning commission meeting. It can't be voted on tonight because it wasn't, it wasn't part of the notice scene. So the entire package consists of all those entitlements that are listed in the resolution, with the exception of the DA. That is not before the planning commission tonight. Just one procedural note.
Thank you, that's good input. My other one is the open space issue. And being an architect and doing multifamily projects, I was very attuned to making sure every single unit had private outdoor space. And I'm a little uncomfortable with as many units as they have without private outdoor space, particularly in the environment that we've got now with COVID and whatnot. And the fact people may be quarantined to their unit and have no ability to go out on their patio or whatever and watch their plant grow. But I think just for health benefits, it's a huge benefit if it can be accomplished. And I think I would really like to be involved in seeing how that's corrected and how the design meets the design guidelines. And we have the ability to make exceptions to the design guideline. I think the code says we can give exceptions for exceptional design. And instead of the 10-foot setback, it might be something less, or probably, in this case, will be, or it would probably start affecting the profit line. So we'd be cognizant of that, but I'd like to see that addressed so we don't start getting projects that, particularly, this is a vehicular piece of property. That part of the street, and the guidelines address that, and this is one of the primary issues, rather than getting into the minutia of it. So I'd really like to see it, be involved in that part of the review and approval. Or I can't give council here tonight a recommendation to do one thing or another. I'd say no, just for that one item. Everything else is good.
Can I interrupt you for a sec?
Mm-hmm.
I like what you said about, let's take the things one piece at a time. Like the GPA, the architectural permit, the tentative parcel map, the whichever, so forth and so on. I'm 100% supportive of that. And that way, if we can recommend approval on some of the items, let's give it, and if we can't on others, then we won't. But you also mentioned about letting the applicant weigh in on if they would be supportive of waiting or advancing it no matter what, or whatever. Mr. Leary, can you please let us know your feelings on that?
I think our preference would be to get whatever feedback we can get from the commission this evening, whatever recommendations, up or down, because I do think we'd like to keep this process moving forward. We would commit to continue to work with city staff. We've received a ton of feedback from the commissioners. We've received feedback from the public. We would continue to work toward that, but I think we would like to stay on course to have the council, have this brought before council for a final decision.
Okay, so even if that's a denial, there's no consensus where we can recommend approval, you would rather hear that than continuation?
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, for the record, my name is Greg Sanders. I'm the attorney representing Memorial Care here this evening. First of all, we actually appreciate the fact that the city attorney found that the development agreement was not included in the notice for tonight's meeting. Because, God forbid, if there's any litigation involving this project after the city council acts, that would have been a fatal flaw. So it does need to be corrected. We would suggest that perhaps the planning commission convene a special meeting. You could do it by Zoom, a virtual meeting, which is permitted under the law, to get this before the city council on schedule, which I think is set for October the 18th. Right. So if you would kindly consider that as the applicant, we would certainly appreciate it. With regard to how you vote, it's obvious from the discussion among the commissioners that you support some of the recommendations, some of the applications, you don't support others. If you want to take an up or down vote on the resolution that's before you, that's okay with us. But we would suggest that as a part of the staff report to the city council, that the staff memorialize your comments about what elements you support, what elements you don't support, so that the council is fully informed about your deliberations. One more comment. Mr. Chairman, you've asked about the benefits to the city under the development agreement. I'm sure the city attorney will support me when I say this. To avail ourselves of the benefits of the density bonus law, we don't have to do affordable. We qualify by virtue of the fact that we are building a senior citizen project. The affordable is an additional benefit to the community that we're not legally obligated to provide. So if you're looking for benefits, we provide them.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders.
Thank you.
So back to, I mean, I, if we want to, you know, go forward with what they said, he's asking for an up or down vote on the resolution as written. Based on what I've heard, that's going to be a denial. But I think we should step through each of the things individually. I agree completely. And give the, you know, sending it just to straight denial up to council is not helpful to council, I don't perceive. But if we identify, walk through each of them, we'd request staff, does this sound good to you guys? And then make sure that staff is aware and properly notes what our concerns are, what we could recommend approval on, or what we could recommend denial on, and why.
I think we made it pretty clear already.
I think not having the DDA attached is a fatal flaw. So, because I think they wanted everything else together, to now separate one because of either a clerical error or something, I think is not advantageous to the public, who would have to return again. So it's either, I want to ask a little question to continue the item. Does it take, how many does it take to continue? Just a majority of the quorum? Because we do have a quorum here.
You would need three votes to continue, it's a majority of the quorum. The reason you need four for the resolution is the government code requires a majority of the body to approve resolutions and ordinances. A simple action requires a majority of the quorum. So you could continue this with three votes.
Because I get the sense they're going to appeal no matter, unless we say yes, they're going to appeal it anyways to the council. So I don't want to spend my time going through every, you know, item if they're just going to appeal it to the council.
So I understand that.
Because it kind of says they don't really regard our decision so much, they're just going to appeal it. It's kind of the same drift that...
This is what we got involved in at design review.
Yeah.
You know, if they didn't want to do it, they dug their heels in, whether it was a good idea or not. And I understand that, because it's, you know, they've got a performer they're wanting to live up to, and that's, so, that's the job.
Sure.
I certainly want to respond to the comment that we have zero regard for your opinion or your decision. I think what we presented tonight and the resources that we've invested in this to date would suggest otherwise. We're very appreciative of the time, we're very appreciative of the feedback. We've been listening, we will continue to listen. What I'm saying is that I would like to keep this on schedule and keep the process moving. Ultimately, this is the council's decision. I think the council would benefit from all of the feedback that you've provided. And I agree, I mean, he's our council, but I agree with Mr. Sanders. I think that the right way to proceed this evening and the way that you would best support the council is take an up or down vote on the resolution, lay out your recommendations or concerns, and then we can take it from there. But please don't, don't leave here this evening with an indication that we don't care what you say. We've been listening the whole time. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just respond to that comment, Mr. Leary?
Please.
First of all, I think we all appreciate that the affordable housing was included, and it's the right thing to do. So as a benefit, yes, but it is the right thing to do for our community. And I would actually like to see it higher than the 8%. But I wouldn't want anything attached to that as concessions. I think we made ourselves very clear as to what we disagree with the project and what we agree about the project. And to, for a lack of a better term that my algebra teacher shared with me, is to beat a dead horse. I think we're done with this. And an up and down vote, it would be no. I don't want to stand in the way of you, you know, appealing this and going right to the city council, that's your right to do. But I think our opinions, and there's some very professional planners here, should be taken into consideration, and I know you are. But we've said this before. We've said this about the parking, we've said this about the architectural design, we've said this about the traffic study, we expressed in the past about community safety. Tonight, I wanted more explanation about the bonus density which I received. I've studied up to this point. But I've made my findings pretty clear.
And I agree with that. And if, and I'm going to defer to staff and to the city attorney in terms of whether those deliberations and those findings and comments, if there's a way to incorporate them into the staff report for the council, that may be perfectly fine.
Whatever is helpful for the project so that a final decision can be made.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a question. Well, as a statement, I think that council would benefit, you know, will benefit significantly from our effort and our communication so long as that gets communicated up to council. So question for staff is, and I don't think there's disagreement on that. Do you guys just say, hey, we've made ourselves clear already? We don't need to do it anymore. Relative to our, you know, comments and thoughts and feelings, have we given you enough already to get that into staff report? Or would you like to see that in terms of emotion and going through the various GPA, TPM, architectural permit and all that stuff? What would staff prefer?
There's two components to your question. One is, yes, staff will include the specific comments and recommendations for council's consideration. But the second part is that you do want to memorialize that recommendation. So you've already identified the changes that you would like to see or the findings you might not be able to support, but you would still want to make a motion on that.
So could the motion just be, and incorporate up to, you know, make council aware in the staff report of the comments that we've already made? Or do we need to remake them in a motion?
You do not need to remake them.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, I'm just clarifying.
The council could watch our video.
I don't know, I don't know if they want to watch the four hours, but...
No, but they can see. I mean, I mentioned tentative, the tentative map, and everybody's kind of mentioned the density, the height. I think it's pretty...
Okay. Okay.
I'd be willing to make a motion not to approve.
Hang on just a second. I'll let you in just a second, let's hear it.
There are a couple of things I just want to make sure. The open space, private open space, I want to make sure is addressed. And that's a health concern. The 50 to 55-year requirement for remaining affordable. And that they clarify what kind of units are included in the 8% that they're offering now and that that is part of the, that that offer remains and becomes part of this project. Okay?
Okay, thanks. With that, I think I'd also like to address Mr. Sanders' suggestion that we have a special meeting before the 18th, potentially via Zoom. I personally don't think that's necessary. I don't think they would have time to change and make changes and incorporate things into the plans quick enough to satisfy us. I don't see any benefit of that. Do, how do you feel about that?
I agree with that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one comment? The statute that governs development agreements does require that you review the development agreement and you make a recommendation. So if you don't have a special meeting, then the statute, the statutory requirements would not have been fulfilled. So it's incumbent upon you to review the development agreement, make a recommendation. And your city attorney is telling you, you can't do it tonight because of the flaw in the notice.
It's only incumbent upon us to the extent that you guys hit your schedule that you want.
No, sir, the law requires it. You have to review the development agreement, and you have to make a recommendation to the city council, either yes or no.
I'm, so, Mal, can you please weigh in on this? But my, my perception is, I assume that he's highly accurate. Except that we don't have to do it by the 18th. That's only if, if, if he wants to hit his schedule and have it in advance of the council meeting. Is that accurate?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, yes. So procedurally, this has to be noticed for 10 days. The commission does have to review it and recommend to the council at some point. What point that is, is really up to the planning commission. It could be delayed, but you're, you're, you're accurate in that we are not beholden to the schedule that's being proposed. You can acquiesce to that, but there's no, there's no need to.
Is there any reason why the development agreement couldn't go after it goes to council?
It could certainly trail. It would be, it would be odd to take the DA as a separate component from the entire package, but there's no, they could do that. It would be odd. It's not, it's not often done. So, well.
But there's no reason that you can't delay. That's the commission's prerogative.
I personally, and I'm open to input on this, but I personally don't see the DA as like critical to the, there's a project itself and a DA potentially, if approved, would just extend the approvals for a certain amount of time.
Just provides vesting. That's correct.
Right, but the project approval, whether council likes it or doesn't like it, its density, its heights, its story count, FAR, all that stuff, they could say yes or no. And if they like it, after the fact, they could do a DA and extend the vesting on it.
That's correct.
So with that being said, I mean, I'd love to hear from my fellow commissioners what you want to do relative to that DA. You said 10-day notice, okay? How quickly could you guys get out of notice, potentially?
The soonest that we could get something published would be this coming Saturday, which we would, which would essentially put the meeting date at around the 19th.
Okay, so.
So it wouldn't, there would be no meeting with 10 days' notice prior to October 18th.
Okay, so to me, that sounds like it's a moot point then, assuming that they're going to try and hold their October 18th meeting. So, but I'd still love to hear from my fellow commissioners about, my impression is the DA can go after the fact if they get an approval or if they can modify it to satisfy council. But I'd love to hear what everyone else says.
If it's in our power, I'd like to see the whole thing go together. I mean, I don't like getting a partial package of anything and having to study it twice.
I'm ready to make a motion to deny the resolution.
Okay.
Let's so move. To deny resolution number PC 22 dash 021.
I'll give that a second.
Okay. Do we want to have discussion on that item? On that motion? Before we vote on that, I guess I'd just like to say, obviously Commissioner Crandall feels like things should go all together. But assuming that the applicant is planning on moving ahead to October 18th, no matter what, then I see, I see that the development agreement could be done separately. So that's my impression.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if it means anything to you, it's, it's okay with the applicant. If you want to bifurcate the decisions, send everything but the development agreement forward?
It's already been decided that we can't vote on the development agreement. So I think, I think we're done.
If you can send everything else forward, we're okay with that. The, you and the city council can consider the development agreement at a later date.
Thanks, yeah, we established that.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
You want to call the roll? Aye?
Aye.
Commissioners, if we could, since there was a split vote on this, if we could get a roll call vote, and I can call your names if that, I can call your names if that would help.
Okay.
We'd like to get each, each vote on the record.
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner McCacken?
Aye.
Commissioner Prescott?
Aye.
And Chair McCann?
Aye.
That was four votes in favor of denial. Act correctly. I apologize, I thought I heard one vote different.
I think we're done on this item. Is there anything else, Mal, that we need to discuss? Okay. Thank you very much, everyone, for your patience and input. Let's take a 10-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 9:40 for the other items. Okay, with that, I reconvened the planning commission.
Okay, with that, I reconvened the planning commission meeting of this evening. And next item of business, CUP 22-141 and MCUP 22-222, De La Hunt Brewing Tasting Room and Offsite Parking Agreement at 1011 Caye Recordo. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do, and our staff planner is David Correio.
Good evening, Chair members of the commission. David Correio, Assistant Planner. So the project here is the De La Hunt Brewing Tasting Room and Offsite Parking Agreement, located at 1011 Caye Recordo in the Business Park Zone within the Rancho San Clemente Specific Plan. The current use is for beer manufacturing, and it's the only tenant on site. The site consists of eight parking spaces, landscape areas with trees, and one equipment enclosure, along with the trash enclosure as well. So the request before us consists of three different permits today. The first one is a minor conditional use permit for a tasting room with 27 indoor seats and eight outdoor seats. The second permit is a minor architectural permit for a new outdoor patio in conjunction with the cold sandwich shop, five fermentation tanks, two angle parking spaces, a widening drive aisle, and removal of one parking space to improve one ADA space. And lastly, a conditional use permit for an offsite parking agreement. So here's the proposed plan, and I want to highlight five elements here. So the first one is the one-way drive aisle, highlighted in yellow, and you see the arrows showing the direction. We have the two parking spaces highlighted in orange, which have been rotated to the west to improve the turn-in radius to those parking spaces. We have in blue the new outdoor patio, and within the green cloud, we have the new and improved ADA space. And the change there was to provide a loading zone on either side of that parking space. And then in the red circles, we have the five fermentation tanks to the north of the So going into parking, the project requires 12 parking spaces. This includes the existing uses, which are manufacturing, warehouse, and office. And now with the proposed tasting room, that's what requires 12 parking spaces in total. So onsite, there's only seven available parking spaces after the ADA space is improved. So currently, we have eight. With the ADA improvement on that space, we'll be losing one space for a total of seven. So that brings us to a deficit of five parking spaces onsite. So to address that, the applicant is requesting an offsite parking agreement for use of nine offsite parking spaces at an adjacent property located at 1009 Caye Recordo. We see it to the right here on the screen. So in yellow, we see those spaces. We have three on the northern side of that adjacent lot, and then six on the southern side of that adjacent lot. So the business at 1009 Recordo does close at 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and does not open on the weekends. So the tasting hours we'll see on the next slide reflect these closing hours. So again, for the tasting room, the applicant is proposing 27 indoor seats, eight outdoor seats. Proposed hours would be consistent with the hours that the adjacent business is not operating, so Monday through Friday, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. We do want to highlight that there is no live entertainment or amplified sound being requested. The hours being proposed for the tasting room are consistent with other tasting rooms within the Business Park, such as Lost Winds, Artifacts, Left Coast, which it's in another industrial park, and then Drift Distillery. We did have this project reviewed by the Code Compliance Division, Orange County Sheriff's Department, and ABC, and all are in support of the use. So here's a north view of the proposed tanks and patio. So we see the tanks next to the building. They'll be below the existing height of the building. We do have some conditions of approval that require the tanks to be painted in a flat or satin finish. That is consistent with some direction we did receive from a similar review by the DRC, the Design Review Subcommittee, back in 2020 for a silo, a grain silo at this site. And I'll clarify, this project did not go through Design Review Subcommittee review, but staff did use direction from that meeting in 2020 to guide the applicant in this application. And to the right of the building, we see the new patio, the new outdoor patio. We see the solid barrier. We see the posts that will support the string lights as well. And I do want to note that in working with the Engineering Division, they did ask for ballers for protection of the outdoor seating, and the applicant was open to providing those as well. So in conclusions per staff's analysis and the staff report, we find that the project is in compliance with the development standards, consistent with general plant policies and design guidelines, and therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA and approve the project subject to conditions of approval. And we did receive one public comment that was in support of the use. That concludes my presentation, and we do have the applicant's team available as well.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
I have a question on the shared parking. Once it's decided that this is acceptable, it does, the owner of the other property, at another time, if they decide this isn't working for them, do they have the opportunity to change this?
Can you repeat the last word?
Okay, the property next door where the shared parking is going to be, if it doesn't work out for that business, do they, how do they change it, or what would be the policy once the shared parking has been approved?
So this would require that the agreement be recorded, so they would have to go through that process to not be tied to that agreement, is my understanding.
Not that I'm predicting anything, but I was just curious. Okay, thank you.
Questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Sorry, my mic was off. This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. We have a speaker card from Rob Johnston.
I had to leave about an hour ago.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Commission discussions?
I just want to congratulate you on being successful enough to be able to take on this additional workload, and I can support the project.
Anyone else?
I have no issues with the project. I would support it.
Okay. I have a question for Bart, actually. I saw on the plan that they had string lights, which I know is a little bit your nemesis.
I wasn't going to bring that up.
Excuse me?
I wasn't going to bring that up.
Well, I was wondering if you wanted to suggest they do shielded string lights? Okay. So I guess I would make a motion.
Chairman, can I, we do have a condition of approval, which addresses that.
Oh, that they'd be shielded?
Yeah, that the string lights be shielded.
Perfect. I missed that. Thank you. I'm open to a motion on this item?
I move we approve Resolution PC 2220, a resolution of the Planning Commission. Do I need to read this whole thing tonight? Resolution 2220.
Commission, if I could, the best way to read the, to make the motion would either be to follow the recommendation at the back of the staff report. It includes two things. One is to determine the project categorically exempt, and the second is to adopt the resolution.
What page are you on?
He's on page eight. I will change my motion and change it to, I move we approve with determination that the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15303, Class 1, existing facilities in Section 15311, Class 11 accessory structures, and adopt Resolution PC 2220, approving conditional use permit 22141, minor conditional use permit 22222, minor architectural permit 2222, De La Hunt Brewing Tasting Rooms and Offsite Parking Agreement, subject to attached conditions of approval.
Second by Commissioner McCacken. Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Item passes 4-0. Thanks, guys. Good luck, and sorry for the long wait. Next item is CUP 22-236, Dish Wireless Telecommunication Facility. If we have a staff report, please.
Is your microphone on?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There we go.
Wait.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. Good evening.
Is that a pun on wireless?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Toma. I'm the Senior Planner in the Planning Division, and today I'll be presenting the Wireless Telecommunication Facility. It's CUP 22-236. So just a little bit of background, it's the request to install a building-mounted antennas with an equipment enclosure on an existing self-storage site. The property is within the Rancho San Clemente Specific Plan, and the property is owned light industrial. The property is located at 170 Avenida La Pata. It's part of our, it's going to be part of the San Clemente self-storage site, as we're all familiar with it. The project description, I just wanted to give like a quick snapshot. Basically, it'll be six panel antennas, 12 remote radio units, three surge suppressors, hybrid fiber Cox cables. They also requested to do two equipment cabinets and one GPS unit, meter socket, utility service, and surge suppressors. And I wanted to give just a little bit of project say of where, so there's going to be three of them, and they're highlighted right here in the site plan. I numbered them. One is in the middle, two is on the right, and three is on the left, where they'll be located. And the highlighted, they're highlighted in red, and what's highlighted in orange is basically going to be their on-ground cabinet that's going to be enclosed within a new ride iron fence. I just wanted to give a quick elevation. So this is the proposed building. This is site one, and this is what they're going to add. It's going to be completely matching to the existing building, same color, same everything. This is what's existing on site two. This is what they're proposing. And then again, this is site three, and then this is what's proposing. Once staff did their analysis for site selection, this is basically to improve service within the community, minimize potential visual impact. It's completely away from any residential developments. To me, our conditional use permit, it complies with FCC's requirements. It's compatible with surrounding land uses. And also, again, like I said, it's away from any residential development, so it wouldn't have any visual impact. In regards to antenna permit findings, it will not alter the height of the existing building. The proposed project will not create any adverse visual impact, as I had mentioned before, to the area or to the city at large. And for general plan consistency, part of our general plan is to provide cellular communication to city residents, public entities in the area, for any areas with service is deficient. This project did go to the DRC on the 28th of September, and the DRC supported the design and moved it to Planning Commission. And for SEQA, this is exempt from SEQA under Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities, and Section 15303, under new construction for small structures. And staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission, one, determine the project that is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA, and two, adopt Resolution PC 22018, approving conditional use permit 22-236 for Dish Wireless Telecommunication Facility, subject to conditions of approval. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Is anyone wishing to speak on this item? Do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we need?
The applicant.
If you want to speak. Do you want to speak? You can speak first and fill out the card later.
Perfect.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing, and we have a speaker. Please state your name, sir, for the record.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Peter Blythe. I'm with PlanCom representing Dish Wireless. Thank you for your time tonight. Real briefly, thank you for your public service. Sarah, thank you for the staff report. We reviewed the draft conditions of approval and are willing to accept them as written. With the exception of 4.16, I think should be removed because it is, I think, an artifact from a previous condition, because this is not a city-owned property. I'd hate to agree to enter into a lease with the city. It's just a minor clerical issue, but I just want to make sure we clean that up before we get it into a formal and final resolution. But other than that, I request your approval. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I do back first. Sarah, that, I think is just a unnecessary.
Yes, it was a, it was an error.
This is a lot on city property.
Correct. It was an error. We just wanted to state it for the record, that the commission would approve, just removing it from the conditions of approval.
Okay. Okay. Commission discussion? Anybody like to discuss this item?
I think it's a good use of space where the location is, and I would be willing to make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a great design, super, you know, I've never seen a cell tower, a cell facility that looks like this. It's amazing. Do more of them, please. So I'm supportive of the project and I'm open to a motion that includes deleting that 4.16 condition.
I'll make that motion. No more discussion? Okay, I'll make the motion.
Mel, does she need to read the whole recommendation move?
If she moves staff's recommendation, that'll include the entire recommendation.
Ooh, I like that.
Okay, so I will do that.
I like that.
We will recommend to, the recommendation, determine the project is categorically exempt for the requirements of the state SEQA Guidelines, Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities, and Section 15303, Class 3, new construction or conversion of small structure, and adopt Resolution PC 22018, approving conditional use permit 22236, Dish Wireless Telecommunications Facility, subject to the condition of approval therein, and we would remove 4.16 from the resolution on page two.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Item passes 4-0. Thank you. Next item, our poor unlucky souls that had to wait till the last. Our poor unlucky souls that had to wait till the last. Thank you. Item D 1108 North El Camino Real, conditional use permit 22-078, San Clemente Gym. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Chair. Adam McTamey, Deputy Community Development Director. I will be presenting the staff report for this item. I just need to get it in the right format. Nope. Sorry. Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is a conditional use permit 22-078 for the San Clemente Gym. The proposed project is a fitness facility located at 1108 North El Camino Real. The zone of the property is Neighborhood Commercial 2. The property is identified here on the map on the right, circled in red. A little bit of background, the property is a 9,368 square foot lot. The project is located, is proposed to be located in an existing two-story, 5,250 square foot, single-tenant building, and surrounding land uses include commercial uses to the northeast and southeast, and residential uses to the southwest and west. The applicant proposes a new fitness facility use. The proposed use will occupy the entire 5,250 square foot building. The fitness facility proposes to operate seven days a week. The hours on weekdays would be 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and on weekends would be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Operations include open training areas with various equipment, as well as one-on-one and group training areas. Staff reviewed the application, and in our project analysis, we've identified that fitness facilities are conditionally permitted, and the Neighborhood Commercial 2 is zoning district. The site does provide sufficient onsite parking pursuant to our municipal code requirements for the use. The use is not anticipated to generate significant impacts to neighboring properties such as intensity, noise, or parking. This is due, as I'll discuss a little bit later, related to how the project is conditioned. And noise impacts are mitigated by limiting the number of occupants for any group classes that would be offered, requiring all activities to remain inside the enclosed building, and as all commercial uses are regulated by the San Clemente Municipal Code with noise limits. On the right, there's a parking calculation that is provided as attachment 3, and this is taking advantage of the municipal codes. Parking allocation as specified for mixed-function uses. This is typical of fitness facilities, is that they tend to have a lot of space, a lot of space that's not necessarily used as much as the gym floor is. Things like offices, you typically have a manager that's in the gym, but also has their own office that they go to, but it's not an office use where people are going to the site for the office portion of it. So we've teased out what we consider the ancillary uses, and identified parking ratios that would apply to the other uses. Based on this, there, at any given time, the maximum required parking would be 14.83. They have 15 parking spaces credited to the site, and that's from 14 spaces that actually exist on the site, and one space that they're credited with for complying with the ADA laws related to accessible parking spaces, and this was an upgrade that occurred last year. They lost a parking space through that process, and when that occurs, our municipal code allows for that credit to remain, so that they don't, uses don't become more non-conforming as people make their properties more consistent with federal ADA law. The findings for the CUP, as identified in your, in the staff report, in your packet, first is the uses allowed in the zone, which I noted that it was. The suit, the site is suitable for the proposed use because the project complies with the general plan development standards, including parking requirements, as discussed. The use is consistent with the intent of the zone and is compatible with the mix of uses in the surrounding area. The staff report and the resolution both touch on the ways that this use is compatible with the mix of uses in the surrounding area, in that there are similar uses that are, that exist and are permissible in the subject zone, and then the last being that the use will not negatively impact surrounding land uses. As I discussed, there are conditions of approval that have been applied to the project to ensure compatibility with the neighborhood, and the examples that I have here are, and I apologize, I can already tell it, I didn't, there's one typo on this, on this slide up here, which I will correct. 7.17 is that activities are to occur indoors, and doors and windows shall remain closed during these operations. It's not number 2.2, it's number 7.18, and that's activities shall not require more than 15 parking spaces pursuant to the San Clemente Municipal Code, meaning that they have areas that can be devoted to either group class area or gym floor area, depending on, depending on what classes they may want to offer at the time. They can do one or the other. They can't do both at the same time, and so this condition limits the uses to, inside to not require more than 15 parking spaces per the code. 7.19, any group classes offered are required to have a 30-minute separation. That really ensures that the, there's no parking overlap. And 7.20, if parking issues do arise in the future, the applicant can be required by the city planner, if parking issues are identified, to submit an amendment to the CUP. It requires a parking survey so that the use and the actual impact of parking can be analyzed by the Planning Commission. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission determine the project categorically exempt, two, adopt Resolution PC 22-022. And then there's one condition that I failed to include in the resolution, and so my motion is going to be both number 1 and 2, as specified in the staff report, and include condition 7.21, which would state, "All operations of the fitness facility shall only occur between 5:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. on weekdays, and 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on weekends." And I will finish my staff report by saying that, in consultation with our city attorney, the shortest way to make a motion is to just say, "I move staff's recommended, staff's recommendation," and then that's all you have to say.
I love that.
So I will, I will end my report with that. The applicant is available, and he may want to make a statement, but he will be available for any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Prescott, last.
There's no mention here of capacity, so how many gym members can be in that building at one time?
There is no limitation.
No limitation, okay.
The things that they would be limited to would be building occupancy per the fire code or building code, or there's an occupancy limiting the number of people that could be in a group class, but as far as the gym floor, the only zoning limitations that apply are based on square footage and how many parking spaces are required related to that square footage.
But there is a fire code that would apply as far as occupancy?
Yes.
Do we know what that is?
You know what, I'm--
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I just-- I don't know that this triggers an A occupancy, and so it would be, it would be limited to 49 within a certain, within any enclosed space in the building, I believe. If it wasn't, if it is classified as an A occupancy, which it shouldn't be, because building did review this project, and they did not require a building permit to change the occupancy rating, and the previous use was a rug store, and that would never be an A occupancy. So I believe it's 49, but if it wasn't, and it got bumped up to the next occupancy level, it would be 100.
And I went out to visit the property over the weekend, and it does back up to residential. There's an alleyway that goes in the back there. I have a slight concern, but it would not keep me from moving the project along, is that I see under here that there is a condition that the owner would consider if there is a problem and would address issues of property maintenance, noise disturbance, amplified sound, and occupancy. So that's why I asked, because I didn't know what the maximum would be, to ensure the operations remain compatible with surrounding residential properties. And so the cars do have to come down that alleyway and come in through the residential side, and then come into the parking area, and then back out, and then use that alleyway at 5:00 a.m. and at 10 o'clock at night. Is it 10 or 11? 10. So I wanted to ask you, staff, how is that triggered? Is that a code compliance issue? This gets approved, and there is a, an issue of noise, sound, parking?
Yes. Conditional use permit enforcement is typically conducted by code-compliance staff. If there are, if there is excessive noise, it's not uncommon for nearby residents to call the deputies of the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and they can also address noise impacts.
Should we remove the An occupancy since there is no limit?
There is a limit.
There is.
And that, it will be established through signage required by the Orange County Fire Department.
Okay, so we, so according to that fire, okay.
Yes, and just to kind of piggyback on that issue, one of our standard conditions of approval that code-compliance adds is 1.5. Use of the subject property shall conform to all occupancy requirements, including posting of signs related to the maximum occupancy limitations. This is actually something that's buried in the building code and is not that well specified. It's that condition that actually requires posting of those occupancy limits within buildings, so we're very cognizant of that issue.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? I have a question, or two. You said in your presentation that the doors and windows are obligated to remain closed?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I have a little issue with that, which I'll discuss in commission discussion, but what's the, what's the idea behind that?
Well, it's a longstanding practice related to uses that typically provide some type of indoor amplified sound, or loud. They're more of a noise generating use. When it comes to a gym, it's the, it would be the clanking of weights. It could just be people, you know, running on machines. And when it comes to bars and restaurants that are located within proximity to residential uses, this condition is always applied, unless, there are certain exceptions, but generally speaking, this condition to keep windows and doors is always required because they want, because the idea is to maintain this, the level of sound within a building. Now, I, there might be some leeway here related to El Camino Real versus the back alley. The different, the thing is that the windows on the El Camino Real side are not operable, and so they're just not, they wouldn't be open. They're not, they're not able to be opened, and at this time, the applicant's not proposing any site improvements.
Okay. Maybe if the applicant speaks, they can address if they're okay with that condition or not. I just, personally, I go to the gym, there's these huge walls and windows, and I wish they would open, we'd have some, some nice, beautiful coastal breeze that we pay to be here for, and I'd love to, you know, see that. And I could see easily where there could be a distinction based on which side of the building, you know, would be allowed, like you mentioned, but if the applicant, if they speak, could address if they're okay with this condition?
Yes, and then I just wanted to confirm, you have, we, I, we had one speaker card that was--
I have two.
Earlier. You have two now?
Yeah.
That looks like them. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. No other questions? Okay with that, I'll open the public hearing, and I have two speaker cards. Stanley Mave, Mav, followed by Thomas Cook.
Commissioner, or excuse me, Chair McCann, the applicant would like to make a statement if--
I'll take the oath first.
You're okay?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
I haven't pulled out a card yet.
Okay.
Pulled out after that.
Okay, great. Stanley?
Hi. My name is Stanley Mave. I'm here to, I'm not here to oppose the gym. I'm here to oppose the noise because I live directly behind there, upstairs from here to you, my bedroom window to the parking lot, and people start showing up from 5:00, slamming their car doors, their alarms, talking on their phones. I've been waking up, I can't even hardly sleep anymore, me and my wife, you know. I tried to go in the back room, and then you can hear it echoing throughout the alley, and that's, that's my main concern. That's why I waited through all this. And I'm not going to talk to him, because I know he's not going to want to close his gym for his hours for his people coming. So that's, that's what I came for.
Thank you. Thomas Cook?
Thomas Cook, I live at 101 Aragon, Apartment B, which is pretty much the same lot. It's separated, of course, but the same owner owns that whole corner right there. It's just separated by the little alley strip. Other than Mr. Mav, who just spoke, and one other tenant that resides in the household in front of us, because we're the garage units, this gym will affect nobody like it will affect the two of us. I'm in favor of the gym. I like the gym. I like the owner of the gym. He's been more than amenable to me when I've had issues come up, especially with parking, and emergency parking. He's a nice guy. I love the view. I like the view of the participants going to the view, going to the gym. Nice people, fit people. It brings in a nice element, and he seems like he wants to improve the area, and so I support the gym. I do have to raise concerns about the hours of operation, though. I am not affected as much as Mr. Mav is, because like he said, his kitchen and main bedroom window literally faces the parking lot, and if I step out of my, what would be my front door, I am probably from the staff, well, the San Clemente emblem is the beginning of their, their parking lot. The width of the, where you are to me is probably about the width of the alley drive. So somebody sneezes in the parking lot, and it echoes throughout the whole, the whole alleyway right there. It doesn't, the noise really doesn't affect me because where I'm behind the garages. The garages are a buffer. I'm a studio, ground floor, behind two garages. So, and I'm a heavy sleeper. Now, my, my significant other, she's a lighter sleeper. She's had to go out, just the past couple of days, she's gone out and, and had to ask members of the gym, who are just hanging out in the parking lot in their vehicles, blasting their stereos to do us a favor and turn the music down. I would hate to be Mr. Mav, especially at 5:00 a.m. Some of his members are motorcycle riders. I love motorcycles. I love motorcycles. But I tell you, in that little alleyway with that echo, they have no concern, they actually like it. I like my loud bike. And you're going to listen to my loud bike. I can't see that happening at five AM, that you can't do construction until seven o'clock in this, in this town. There, there's got to be some accommodation in the hours. I, I can't see, I can't, I can't see a five AM opening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Did you want to speak as well, sir?
May I please?
Yeah, please. So please state your name and then after the fact, if you could fill out a card so they can get your information.
Yes, thank you. John Openshaw. My family owns the San Clemente Gym. The San Clemente Gym's been servicing the community for forty-four years, the longest same name, same location gym in Southern California and beyond. We were displaced by a big flood in October. We were blessed to find eleven oh eight. We expect to keep up the standards of the community and servicing the community that we have and we will continue to. Sorry to see Stan and Tom here. I think it's a bummer that, you know, obviously we're all friends, we like each other. I think it's more of a parking issue. I open the gym personally at five AM every morning. I show up in a golf cart. Greg shows up at five fifteen. He's in a golf cart. Glenn shows up. Bob shows up on his bike. Two, three people. Six o'clock, seven o'clock, eight o'clock would be the general momentum of the gym. We close at nine PM, even though we've asked for hours to ten PM. We close at nine. Ten's just, hey, if business gets good and we can expand, that'd be great. But we do close at nine. Those are our posted hours on all our websites and everywhere. We're blessed to be part of this community. Thank you very much. Any questions, I'm here for you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the owner or applicant?
Well, since, since I did visit the site, I understand their complaint because they are right there. It is a mixed-use area. It was a carpet company, which was, carpet is very quiet, especially at ten o'clock at night and five in the morning. They do, the residents should have a quality of life and there should be some sort of balance. Would you consider amending your hours to where there is more of a noise ordinance? Leaf blowers can't start until seven. Construction can't start until seven AM. Would you consider something like that?
I would urge you to come by at five in the morning and see the peace-
I'm up early, I'm in construction.
So fortunately, the building only has two windows in the back and they're tiny, tiny, tiny. We're cinder block walls. I'm really, really blessed to have this property because it does not radiate noise. It really doesn't. There's no motorcycles coming at five in the morning. There's golf carts and bikes. It is tranquil. There's no amplified sound system. We have two Alexas that services background music just for the gym. I urge you to come participate and see because between five AM and seven AM, it's quiet as a church mouse. We're super considerate. I personally police the property. I've removed the crack cars sleeping in the neighborhood, all the mayhem that does go on in all hours. Stan walks his dog at six in the morning. We both have dogs. He's up early. Tom called me at midnight to, to, to let me know of an intruder potentially being in the building one night. These guys are up all hours. My other neighbors who live right behind, Colby, they're silent. We all get along. I think it really has to do with some parking, losing some personal spots. Our buildings are owned by the same owner. Stan did the painting on the building. He worked for our owner. They kind of had carte blanche of the parking lot. That's kind of changed. I think that that might have a little bit of an influence here.
So that was the compromise?
Well, we did, we, we are only open till nine PM.
Nine PM.
At five PM, the gym community and the health community, the San Clemente Gym has been open since five AM for forty-four years and, and servicing the community in a super polite, professional, quiet manner.
No, I know you're, I know you're, you are in El Cami, no, Del Mar? No, just-
On El Camino.
El Camino, right.
South El Camino, now we're north El Camino.
And there was no residential in that area?
Six apartments upstairs.
Oh, there were?
It was mixed use, yeah.
Mixed use, okay.
And we had to be aware of them. And, and so as an example, I've added extra padding everywhere because I don't want to hear it either. You know, there's nothing like being at the desk and hearing bam. I've eliminated all that. We, we, we added an extra three quarters of an inch padding everywhere, on top of the half inch and the inch in places. I understand what needs to happen to be great neighbors and to minimize noise and reduce noise. And again, I'll buy you the coffee. We'll go get a cappuccino. You'll find that we roll up in our golf carts, we're super silent, we're super polite. It is unfortunate how close Stan's bedroom window is too, but it's a good forty yards and we're talking cinder block walls on the backside. On the front side, the El Camino, our windows don't open. They're, they're those huge windows. We have two doors. There really is no release of, of noise. It's really, really quiet.
It, it sounds to me like the, the issue that was, you know, mentioned was not noise emanated from the building, but people in the parking lot. People playing their radios, people coming early, chatting, getting on the cell phone, whatever. So I, I don't think anyone's disputing the, the, the building itself.
We, we do have the ability to, to send messages to our members, to be cautious and courteous, to move in and out. Our early morning crowd are one people at a time and they're staggered by fifteen to thirty minutes and it's really a cumulative total of eight people between five AM and six thirty AM. So it's not an impactful situation, but I will pass along to everybody to be courteous, quiet, and, and respectful.
How many off, on-street parking sites, spaces are around your building?
There's approximately forty-seven spaces between Portale West, Portale, and Aragon, all-
And that island has, on the street there also has, um-
That's all short-term, mixed-use, no overnight parking. And, and there's, um, a twelve in between myself and the boutique across the way. There's ten on Aragon.
That's, that's, you were saying there's only like eight people between five and six thirty?
And Bob, Kathy.
Would it be, I'm not sure we can do this. Could you put a condition that the parking lot be closed, not opened until seven?
Yeah. Staff doesn't see that being an issue. We could-
They're just a chain, so people are somewhat forced to park on the street. But I think that would certainly help the car noise and the doors, doors closing and whatnot.
If, if, if echoes factor, you could drop a, you could drop a dime and it echoes through the wall.
Yeah. So that would give you at least a relief until the normal quiet hours are over.
Yes, we could, you know, we could, trying to think how, the easiest way to go about this would be. I think a, a condition that states something to the effect of to mitigate early morning noise impacts, you know, the applicant shall close the parking lot to, to vehicles. I, I don't see golf carts and e-bikes being, being an issue. And we can probably put in a six-month review for that. I think that would, I think that would be fine. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
You think that would help your, let's say, reduce it? It won't eliminate it, but it'll reduce it.
Do the people park on the sides of, of the gym, they're still echoing when they hit their alarm alarms. I mean, it, it echoes through, but parking lots, they park most of the time, it's almost like right under my window, it feels like.
You're, you're in that one-on-one building?
I, I don't want to get into it, but if I may point out, he's fifty yards from El Camino Real on two major corridors and there's traffic, you know? It's, it's major, but I mean-
I would agree. Like I said, I went down there, that, that alley, however, is very narrow. It's, it's about a golf cart and some, I mean, my car fits down there, but it was a, it was one-way. You're not going to have two cars. It's very much like the alleyway behind Hodad's, right in there. And-
All very busy in there. You've got the market, the tire place.
But not at five AM. It's not all very busy. Okay? So, and you do have those, and his, I know where your bedroom is. I wasn't looking in, I just know, I could look up and there it was. And I saw the garage and I saw the Halloween decorations in the front of the, the downstairs and, I mean, it's right there. And that parking lot is very small and it's backed up to the wall of the gym. I think that would be a good compromise for six months trial to see, and you say you have about eight members that attend between that time? And, and some, you know, you could, you as, as owners and your golf carts and your bikes could still park in there and the one or two cars could park on the street?
I think it's going to be interesting when some of these people realize that overnight parking is going to get enforced on those streets and, yeah, it's, um, interesting dynamic.
Would they be parking overnight?
There's, it's, there's no overnight parking there in those streets, yeah. I appreciate everything everyone's done. I'm just here to be part of the team and whatever we need to do.
Well, it sounds like you're wanting to be a good neighbor as well.
I, I am, yes.
So Commissioners, I, I'll just modify the condition that I, I verbally stated as a, as a recommendation and end with a six-month review provided by the city planner to the planning commission. And so at a, at a meeting in six months, I'll provide a review and it will be based on staff site visits at, during that, during that timeframe. The one thing I will just mention, because since this issue has come up through public discussion, is that there are a lot of uses that could, that could operate without any limitation on hours. Like a coffee shop could start in this building and people could park there as much as they want and there would be no avenue for recourse from the neighboring property owners. But seeing that it is conditional and we do have the authority to regulate it based on potential impacts to the neighborhood, staff's comfortable with a, a condition requiring that parking be for the, for the first, what, what did we say? Was that five to seven or five to six? Five to seven?
Five to seven.
Okay.
Pardon me, that's not a permanent condition though, right? That's a trial to see-
It's trial, just to see what else.
It'd just be a cable across or whatever, you know?
I may be out of order. The closure of the parking, because these customers in the morning may not buy this.
Oh, I see what you're saying. There's, there's, okay.
Darn if you do and you darn if you don't because I don't, I, I like him and his customers and I don't want to be a burden. Hearing you propose, hearing the commission propose parking lot closure that he's paying for until a certain point seems, even though I support, I'm like in between two neighbors here. I like them both. I like the whipping shop here. It, it seems unfair, especially since his customers at that early in the morning may not find adequate parking that early in the morning. Parking in the mixed use.
Now, what he says is there's only like five or six customers that come at that time. Why couldn't they bite in? If it's only that many people, it shouldn't be a big deal, not to park in the parking lot.
Okay, I think we've had enough public input and, and it's kind of out of order. So we're kind of a little informal here, but I appreciate, we, we do appreciate the input. So I think, I think we, we understand the issue enough.
I'm just trying to find a compromise and I understand both, all three, all three things. And I, I don't want you to have to adjust your business. So, and, and I wasn't aware of the, the no parking on the street because when I was there, there looked like there was plenty of parking.
Okay, so, we, commission discussion?
I'd like to hear from everybody else as far as their opinion.
Yeah.
Why can't we approve it with some kind of a monitoring program? Because the noise may be created, anybody could drive down the alley. You don't have to be a gym. It's a public alley. So I kind of would like to leave it how it is with the owner talking to the neighbors. If they have a complaint, it sounds like he'll address it if it's his member. But if it's some teenager driving down the street at five thirty in the, you know, alley or somebody else who's just meeting that doesn't have anything to do with his business, that's not his fault and that needs to be kind of reported to the sheriff or whatever. But that's sort of my feeling is that I think they could work it out amongst themselves.
Okay.
We've got so many alleys and so many residential units on one side and commercial on the other, it's kind of all over town down there. But they don't use those hours. They aren't opening at five AM in the morning.
But they could.
So-
Not necessarily.
Just for, for considerations purposes, any use that creates sound that when it reaches a residential property is fifty decibels or less, there's, there's no violation of the city's noise ordinance. And that includes the time period between ten PM and seven AM. During the day, the, the limit is fifty-five decibels unless it's a mixed, it's a residential portion of a mixed-use project and then it's sixty decibels. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of uses that would, that, that do occur overnight and could occur on this property through a different type of proposal that may make some sound. And I'm not sure if the level of sound that's being created is actually within that noise standard.
It's not ongoing. It's kind of body in short term.
Staff is supportive of whatever measure the planning commission would want to take to ensure that, you know, this use is compatible or does, doesn't negatively impact surrounding land uses to the extent that it can.
Question?
My two cents, for what it's worth, I think the proposal to temporarily, you know, close the parking lot limited hours is a good, is a good effort, a good try. I agree with Commissioner McCacken, you can't really, you certainly can't always, you know, control the sound and that's just kind of an exposed location to other, you know, sound sort, you know, emitters. But, so I'm supportive of the, of the hours and review, the, you know, lot restriction and, and re-review it in six months.
If it was working fine, could we, could they bring it back to us sooner than six months or is six months it?
I could do an informal check-in at three months and then provide an actual written report.
To see if it's really necessary.
When I say report, it'd be like a memorandum, but within, at six months.
And the issue of no parking on the street, yet there's parking on the street overnight?
So the parking on the street issue is that there is parking allowed on the, on streets, but they, the member of the public stated that they're not enforcing the overnight parking that's, that's not allowed. So at five AM, there is street parking that is available, but the, one of, one of the neighbors that spoke indicated- that spoke indicated that it's, a lot of it's taken up because of a lack of parking enforcement. I don't know that to be the case entirely. I can see that there might be some places where that could be an issue, but I know on El Camino Real, because my staff drives, you know, they start at 4:30 in the morning, we don't have a lot of issues with lack of parking on El Camino Real.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve staff's recommendations with additional condition of approval as stated by staff.
There were two conditions. One was a new condition, 7.21. All operations of the fitness facility shall only operate between 5:00 AM and 10:00 PM on weekdays, and 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM on weekends. And then, a second one, that the parking lot shall be closed off between 5:00 AM and 7:00 AM daily, and that parking, for vehicles, for motor vehicles, and that the patrons between that, those hours, shall utilize street parking for vehicles. And that the city planner will provide, and I'll call it a verbal report to the planning commission, in three months after operations pursuant to the CUP commence, and in six months, I'll provide a written report as to the effectiveness of that condition.
So moved. Or so, yeah.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? The motion is granted.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
All of you.
Thanks for your patience.
Yes.
We can tell how much it bothers you.
It shows commitment to wait.
First meeting ever. This is the first meeting here?
Here. At this location, yeah.
Thanks.
Have a good night's sleep.
Okay. New business, no new business, old business, no old business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
I'll second that motion. All in favor of adjourning to the next meeting on Wednesday, the October 19th?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Meeting is closed.